Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of February 10th, 2021. This meeting may be held fully remotely via Zoom in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 law or order suspending. Certain provisions of the open meeting law are in general law small C 30A section 20. This meeting will have live broadcast on WHCA TV and online. The public must register in advance on the Zoom webinar link below to participate in public comment. Also, we are operating live and we are recording this meeting, so please keep that in mind. Everyone has on a mask? Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as it is for us. Would you also join me in a moment of silence? Here I had a hat on through the whole time. Thank you. I apologize, I forgot I had a hat on, this bald head. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we have to have roll call votes for everything as Mr. Small is participating remotely. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Here.
Mr. Collety?
Here.
Mr. Scriven?
Here.
Ms. Byers?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Niffen?
Here.
Mr. Small?
Here.
Mr. Small, are you alone?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. We can play a public comment for 15 minutes up to three minutes per community member.
Up first is Sean Kane.
Okay. Sean, how are you?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I have three minutes?
Yes.
Sorry. It's my first public comment through Zoom. Honestly, I'm making the comment today because I'm concerned about next year's budget. Obviously with COVID, for anybody involved in the schools, teachers, students and parents, COVID situation has placed an incredible mental health like burden on all of us. And the thought of potentially losing funds next year is terrible. I think to have such a, to lose funds in such a vulnerable time in our community would really do a good amount of harm. Hanson has given us some insight into their financial situation. And I know we don't know the exact details of their budget, but it's pretty clear that they have a good sized deficit and just to level service, potentially level service to the school budget, it looks like they're going to need an override. And to me, to have an override in the middle of a pandemic is just not ideal, you know? So I think really, although it's not a great option, I think the best option for us, the one that puts students first, is to potentially extend the compromise. Doing so, I think, really does hopefully make it doable to get to a level service budget without an override, which I think would be outstanding and really prevent the loss of funds again during this vulnerable time. That's pretty much it.
Anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Kane? He's got another minute and a half.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Wolford?
Ms. Wolford, can you hear us?
Hi.
Thank you for calling in.
Yeah.
Where are they from?
Where?
Yeah.
Where are you from, Ms. Wolford?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What'd you say?
What's your address and your town, please?
Oh, 31 Birch Park Drive in Hanson.
Okay. You can start.
I just had a question, because we had received a survey from the superintendent of returning to school. So it had said you could join the meeting. So really, I was looking for if there was a plan in place for when and if the kids are going to return full time. And I didn't know if that would be addressed at tonight's meeting.
Yes, the superintendent is going to address returning to school in the meeting when his report comes on in approximately 25 to 30 minutes.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
No, that's my biggest concern really is just if there's any sort of plan for the future, like as to, you know, I didn't know if they, I know eventually they will and should, but I just didn't know if there was a plan for when, so.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for calling in.
That's it?
That's it?
Just two, yeah.
Just two? Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none?
As you can see, public comment's a little bit different tonight.
We have a speaker. We're trying to make it a little bit better so everyone can hear. So anyone that's watching, we have a 15-minute public comment set aside for the beginning of all meetings if you'd like to call in. If you check on the website, you'll see how to find out to get to the Zoom webinar link. And you can register it at WHCA.tv/webinar. So if you have any questions during the week and you don't get to that, you can call the superintendent's office and they'd be more than happy to help you figure that out. Okay, I'm going to take a few things out of order because we have some people here. Technology assessment by Custom Computers. Jeff, are they here?
Yep. They're coming up now.
George, you want to introduce them, please?
Hi, I'm Steve. I'm the Associate Director of Technology for Whitman-Hanson. Good to see you guys again. During the last school committee meeting when I was present, you had asked us about the phone system. And then we were going to do a full capital matrix. You held a meeting and you said you wanted to hear about all the prerequisites and everything. We engaged custom computer specialists and they're here now to discuss more about their findings and everything they've done and recommendations. This is Suzanne. She's the Vice President and General Manager. And allow to introduce the team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having us. Everyone, thank you. I'd like to introduce you to two of my colleagues. This is Christopher Powers. He's the Director of Engineering for Custom Computer. And this is Mason Sock. He is our Client Relationship Manager. So thank you very much for the opportunity to work with the school district to evaluate your infrastructures. As Steve has told you, and why is it not working? You're with me? As Steve had explained, we have been working with the district to do an evaluation of the technology infrastructures that you have in place. As a result of that, we've developed a list of recommendations for you. And one of the handouts we're leaving you is this document, which will provide you an overview of each one of the key installed infrastructures in the district, what the current state is, what the challenges are, what our recommendations are for upgrading, and the benefits and the associated costs to each one of them. So tonight, I'm going to quickly go through the eight key infrastructures that we looked at. Those include the network infrastructure, your wireless infrastructure, your server infrastructure, the voice infrastructure that Steve had mentioned, physical security as it relates to video surveillance only, the AV system in the high school for performing arts, the printer infrastructure and the interactive whiteboards that you have distributed throughout the district. So let's get started and talk about the network infrastructure. So the network is the core of, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. I just have to ask a member. Mr. Small, can you hear them?
It's difficult, but I can.
Is this better?
I mean, it'll work. It'll work.
We're just moving a little bit closer, Fred.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that better?
Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, not a problem. Let me know if you can't hear me. So as I was saying, we were going to start with the network infrastructure. The network is the core of all of the technology that's deployed throughout the district. So all of your network devices runs over the network infrastructure. So it really is the heart and soul of the district. What's deployed throughout the district is based on an Extreme Networks infrastructure. And there's also some legacy HPE switches. Your IT staff currently supports over 12 different switch models. They do an outstanding job, but it definitely is challenging. The majority of the switches are end of life and they're no longer supported by the manufacturer. And what that means is that they're not developing any patch updates, any OS updates. So any new cyber threats that are released, there's no new patches that are there to protect you. So it definitely is a concern. Due to the age of the equipment and its legacy, it does not support any of the new technologies that are being released. So some of the other things that we're going to be talking about tonight, like voice over IP and the new wireless standards, are not supported under the network infrastructure that's deployed. So this definitely will be a key. So from a recommendation standpoint, in order to be able to support the growth that you have with the one-to-one devices that are coming back into the district, it really is going to be important to upgrade that network infrastructure as soon as you can. What we recommend is that you upgrade it to an enterprise class infrastructure that's either based on chassis or stackables, that they all serve power over Ethernet standards, which essentially means in the future, if you have a device that is enabled by power over Ethernet where the electrical pulses can go over the network cable, they'll be powered that way and not require 110. Follow the design that you already have in place with redundancy. That is key, especially with having so many more devices within the network. We would also recommend that you start breaking up the way that the routing is setting up on the network and push it out to the remote schools. So only the key traffic that needs to go back to the high school and to the data center comes back here. That will increase your network performance and it will also give you another level of security. And then lastly, we would recommend that the network infrastructure that you put in place support the new wireless standards. If we take a look at the budgetary cost, you'll see up here that in order to upgrade the network throughout the district in all the locations comes to about $810,000. You can certainly upgrade the schools individually and you would have to really approach it from a full network upgrade in each one of the buildings. But from a priority standpoint, we really would recommend that you start with the core at the high school, since that really is the heart of the district and everything collapses to the high school. And then start rolling it out to the other closets within the high school and then out to the other schools. After the-
Here.
Yes, Fred.
Could I ask a very quick question?
Yes.
Very quick question.
Yes, because you're in the middle of presentation.
The Extreme Networks, is that the old Arrow Hive platform? Did Extreme buy it?
So yes, that is. So Extreme did, yes, they did acquire Arrow Hive for their wireless technology.
Okay. And the ongoing maintenance, does that include the licensing fees?
So for the network infrastructure, the ongoing maintenance does include networking fees. What we did was we budgeted, we took an average across the manufacturers, not knowing which final manufacturer you would end up with. And that would be on average after three years, what the ongoing maintenance fees are. Most of the equipment that is released today does include three-year maintenance as standard.
Okay, but the license, in other words, you have to buy that license every, I think it's every three years they expire?
Yes, you can either do one, three, five, or seven. That's correct. That's correct. So that ongoing maintenance fee includes a three-year renewal license.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's move on to the wireless infrastructure. So the wireless infrastructure is the one that provides wireless connectivity for the laptops, the Chromebooks, and any other wireless devices that are out there that support your online services and your internet access. That is also based on an Extreme Networks and Interesses infrastructure, which is also end of life. There are two wireless controllers right now that actually provide the management and control of a total of 310 access points that are deployed throughout the schools. So one controller supports about 98 access points and the other controller handles the rest. There are three different types of access points that are deployed. Two of them do not support the latest standards and are challenged to be able to handle a one-to-one environment. So knowing that your number of end user devices is going to increase coming into the schools, it's really important to look at the wireless infrastructure as well. From a recommendation standpoint, what we would recommend is that you upgrade to the latest technology. So there's a new standard that's been released. It's called 802.11AX or Wi-Fi 6 is what it's quoted as. And this new technology is specifically geared towards high density. So the current wireless technology that's out there has a hard time handling the number of connections in a typical classroom, for example. This new standard addresses that type of challenge and it manages the bandwidth and gives a much better support and model for the end users. So that would be the first thing that we would recommend is upgrading those. The cabling infrastructure that you have in place right now will support the new standard. That does not need to be replaced or upgraded, which is a good thing. We would also recommend that you install two new wireless LAN controllers, but in this scenario, we would advise you to configure those in high availability mode. So if one of them goes down, the other one will take over and you can also do load balancing. And then we would also recommend with the high number of wireless devices that are coming in, that you implement an extra level of security protocol. If we take a look at the budgetary costs that are associated, in order to upgrade the wireless throughout the district in all the schools, it's approximately $560,000. What I do want to call your attention to is the line item for the district. That $98,000 figure is specifically for the wireless LAN controllers and the licensing that's needed to go in the core. So that is the first step before you'd be able to upgrade the wireless throughout the rest of the buildings. What you see for the costs associated to each one of the other schools is for the access points, the licenses associated to those access points, as well as the installation, the configuration, the documentation, and the knowledge transfer. What I also want to call your attention to is if you decide that you want to upgrade the wireless, before you upgrade the network infrastructure, you will need to purchase network switches, one per wiring closet throughout the district to be able to do a wireless infrastructure upgrade. What we did was we included the network switching as part of the overall network upgrade. So if you do that first, you will have the switching in place that you would need for the wireless. And then from an ongoing maintenance perspective, again, very similar to the networking, it's usually a three-year model. And then moving forward after that, it's about $10,000 per year, which is for the renewal licenses. Okay, next please. Okay, the next infrastructure we looked at was the voice infrastructure. Currently, you have a legacy of Via Definity PBX solution that's in place. It's about 15 to 20 years old. It consists about six separate phone systems that are dispersed across the buildings that are not integrated, they're not connected, so you're managing six separate phone systems. Each one has its own dial planned and it's administered separately. The core system and the voice gateways are all end of life and end of support. They cannot be expanded or upgraded. No new parts are available for them. So anytime a module or anything goes, it's a refurb model that you need to get. You have approximately 500 phones across the district and 617 voicemail boxes. The cabling infrastructure for the phones are legacy category six cabling, and it's not supported under the new technology. So any of the new voice over IP will not run over that cabling. That would have to be upgraded. You also have a total of eight PRI lines that come into this building that provide inbound and outbound calling for all of your schools. When you're looking to upgrade the voice infrastructure, there are three ways that you can approach this. The first way is more of a hybrid model. This is where you're just replacing the core of a Via Definity call processing unit, so the brain of the phone system, with a hybrid model that's called PBX and IP. And that actually will support the legacy phones and the old analog phones that are out there. So with this one, all you're doing is replacing the core, but you're leaving the old cabling and the old phones in place. So you still have a legacy challenge that you're going to be working through, but this one is the most cost-effective model, that solution that is available. The second option is to replace the entire system with a voice over IP on-premise solution. So in this model, what you would be doing is you would be putting a new voice over IP phone system here in the high school that will support the entire district. It'll run your call processing, it'll run your voicemail, it'll run your E911, it'll run your paging service. And from there, all of the phones are based on IP, so they're all network devices. So essentially, they would hang off the data network. This would require new cabling and it would require new phones and it would require switching. The third option is very similar to option two, except for the fact that it's hosted. So this is hosted voice over IP. The difference with this one is that the actual core processing is put up in the cloud. So you would not have an on-premise brain, so to speak, on the network. The difference between option two and option three is that usually when you go to a hosted model, you're not going to get all the features and functionality that you would get if you had an on-premise solution. So it's bare bones dial tone, you're going to get voicemail, you'll get a 911 where it will report where the call came from, from an address perspective. It won't give it to you down to the classroom as an on-premise solution will do, but it's hosted up in the cloud. From a cost perspective, it's based on usage. So it's not a fixed cost. So when you're looking at a hosted VoIP solution, it's challenging to determine exactly how much it's going to cost you from one month to a year. Any payload that you move to the cloud is all based on resources and usage. So those are the three options. If we take a look at the budgetary cost at a high level, the first one, as I said, was the hybrid PBX IP model. This is where we're just replacing the brains and we're keeping everything else. This is the least expensive. This is about $345,000 to do this. After year one, the ongoing maintenance is approximately $32,000 a year. This will give you the ability to use what you have for phones and cabling. You'll get dial tone, you'll get voicemail. However, with that said, eventually, you're going to need to upgrade the phones and the cabling. And as those phones fail, what you're probably going to be doing is running cabling and replacing the phones with IP and then bringing it over to this new system with IP. So that's option one. The second option is the on-premise solution. And this is the one where you're replacing everything and you're going to have an on-premise solution that you manage, you support. And in the documentation I provided you, it's going to give you much more detail on the three different options that you can read about. In order to upgrade the entire system, including the cabling, the phones, the brains, the network switching, is about $827,000. After three years, it usually includes three years of maintenance. After three years, the ongoing maintenance for an on-premise solution is usually about $25,000. And then if you go to a hosted VoIP solution, there are two different ways that you can approach this. If you look at a, I should have mentioned this, if you look at an on-premise VoIP solution, one thing that you have the ability to do is to add survivability at all the remote schools. So if they lose connectivity to the main call processing unit, they will continue to function. That's the benefit of having on-premise. When you go to hosted VoIP, inherently, it doesn't work that way, okay? It runs over your internet connection, so you need to increase your internet bandwidth. If you have poor quality, from an internet bandwidth perspective, you're going to have poor quality on a voice call perspective. You can add survivability. Once you add survivability, you're actually adding the majority of what you would do on an on-premise solution, so the costs are close. When you look at this one up here, the $725,000, this is hosted VoIP without survivability. And that's because you still need to replace the cabling, you need to replace the phones, and you need to do network switching. And that is included in there along with three years of hosted VoIP estimated costs and all the configuration and the maintenance. If you move one more slide, you're going to see what the difference would be with survivability. You're going to see that that comes in to add about $814,000, and that's adding gateways out to the external schools to give you survivability. So it's very close to an on-premise solution at that point. After you finish this, after three years, it's very hard to estimate what your hosted VoIP is going to be. For a district that this size and looking at the minutes and your calls that you do right now, we would estimate that the hosted VoIP would be probably between 120 and 150 a year. So overall, with that said, we would say that from a cost perspective and being able to be predictable on cost, we would recommend one of the on-premise solutions that gives you the most scalability and the most functionality. Okay, let's move on and talk about the server infrastructure. So your server infrastructure is what supplies all of your authentication, your file services, your applications, your email, and your virtual desktops. Right now, you have a hybrid server model that contains a mixture of physical and virtual servers. You have 40 physical servers and you have three virtual cluster environments that support an additional 40 servers. So your staff is supporting 80 servers overall. And you have approximately 500 virtual desktops that are served up by that environment. The hardware vendors include Dell HP, HPE, and EMC, so there are multiple manufacturers that you're supporting. Most of the hardware is currently not under support and has gone end of life. The virtual environment is made up of two different models, VMware and also legacy Hyper-V, which is no longer supported. In addition to that, many of the servers are running an older version of operating system, which also will need to be upgraded. So from a recommendation standpoint, we would recommend that the equipment be upgraded to the latest standards and a technology to really streamline that whole environment. Upgrade all the server operating systems to the latest version so that you can get the patch updates and you can be in full compliance with Microsoft. We would recommend that you upgrade the current email exchange, which to 2019, you're running 2010 today, which is no longer under support. So whether you go to Exchange 2019, or you go to Office 365, or you go to Google Mail, it's something that you want to take into consideration. And then you also should be looking at a new backup solution to make sure that all your intellectual property is backed up and that in any case of having a disaster, or hopefully never a ransomware attack, you're able to easily recover. To upgrade that server infrastructure in its entirety is about $600,000 to do that. It is a shared environment, and so when you're looking at it, you can piecemeal it, but it makes it a little bit more challenging to do that. It does include three years of maintenance and warranty. And then the estimated ongoing maintenance for this costs about $37,200 starting in year four. And every year after that, the maintenance costs go up approximately 10%. So you have an idea of the ongoing maintenance from that perspective. Okay. The next area that we looked at was the video surveillance. You have two different video surveillance, got it. You have two different video surveillance systems in place, Vigilon and Pelco. The cameras that are installed are hybrid. You have both IP cameras and old analog cameras. They're primarily in the hallways and the exterior. Typically, right now, there are some gap areas that you need to address, but the biggest challenge right now is going to be to upgrade those older analog cameras to the new IP cameras. Okay? So that's exactly what we would tell you, recommend you to do. And also upgrade the video management system. From a budgetary perspective, one more. From a budgetary perspective, to upgrade all of the video surveillance in the district is about $436,000. Again, you can see with most technology in a school district, it comes with three years of maintenance and warranty, okay? So that's as much as it would be after the three years when you look at the video surveillance system, the ongoing maintenance is usually between $10,000 and $15,000. We also looked at the AV for the high school for the performing arts. This is a 10,000 lumen lamp-based video projector that was originally installed as part of the high school building construction. So you know how long ago that goes. There's low image intensity issues with that. The lamp-based technology is very costly for the school district to support. Every time they need to change it, it costs about $1,800 and it lasts about 1,000 hours. The current projector right now is failing and the Creston control system, which actually controls the entire system, is also failing. So there are challenges there and the system really does need to be upgraded. It also is based on analog technology and it doesn't support any of the new video standards for HDMI. So we have a recommendation in there to upgrade it to a new 15,000 lumen laser lamp solution with a new screen and also a new management system. And if we take a look from a budgetary cost perspective, to do that is overall is going to cost about $80,000 for the new infrastructure. The next area we looked at was printing. So right now, you have printers dispersed throughout all of the classrooms and throughout all the schools. They're not centrally managed and your consumables are costly. You do have a press area in the high school that takes care of the large print jobs for the school, which is very, very beneficial. So that's been handling that piece and that task. From a recommendation standpoint, as we look at school districts, they're really moving towards a centralized print model. And what that means is they're taking the printers out of the classrooms and they're putting in larger all-purpose multifunction units that can actually print the jobs quicker at a level of security and give you better manageability- at a level of security and give you better manageability of the print jobs, as well as being able to keep track of the paper usage, the consumable costs, and the overall usage. From, if you look at this, this is what we would recommend on the number of units that you would need in each one of the buildings. So for the high school, we would recommend at least nine, and then for all the other schools, we would recommend about four of these multi-printers. If you look at the costing, it's going to cost about $217,000 across the district to upgrade that. This does not include any consumables. And when you're getting into a printing model, there's two approaches to it. You can either lease it through a printing company, or you can procure it. If you procure it, it's a higher upfront cost. Long-term, it's going to cost you less. But if you lease it, then the responsibility of keeping them maintained is on the provider to be able to do that. And then the last area we looked at were the interactive whiteboards. You have interactive whiteboards installed in all of your classrooms. Congratulations, that's wonderful. The district started doing this in 2005 in the high school, and they've standardized on Promethean across the district. You do have some smart boards out there too, but primarily Promethean. These units are aging, they're very costly and time-consuming to repair, and they're not fully integrated with all of the applications that are out there from a curriculum standpoint. So what we would recommend is that you upgrade these to a newer, smarter technology. Today's units are all-in-one devices that are integrated as a screen and a projector and a computer all-in-one, so they give you much higher quality, they support the new operating systems, they support the new end-user devices, and they're overall giving a much better experience in the classroom. And then finally, if we take a look at the budgetary pricing, in order to upgrade all of the interactive whiteboards that you have across the district, it's $919,000. But this definitely is an area where you could do it in piecemeal and go as you move along. But do keep in mind that these interactive whiteboards are starting to fail, and they are getting costly, so this is something that you would want to put on your timeline for upgrading. And finally, just a couple more key points I wanted to recommend to you. Several of these infrastructures require cabling. We would recommend that you try to do the cabling all at one time. You're going to get a much better return, because at this point, if you're pulling multiple cables to the same location, you're really paying for the materials, not the labor, so it'll be more cost-effective for you. And this is primarily for voice and video surveillance. From a network upgrade perspective, as I had mentioned, replace the core in each school first, if you want to do it piecemeal. And then what you want to do is add the switches that you're, you need to add for wireless, voice over IP, and video surveillance, and then you can replace the other switches at a later date if you're looking for a based-in approach. And then from a wireless upgrade perspective, you really want to look at this one building at a time, and I just want to remind you that you do need to start with the district purchase first before you do any upgrades on the wireless. And that is a very quick summary of the information that we provided in your handout. We hope that this was helpful. I'll answer any questions you have. We're also very happy to come back at a later date and answer more questions if you have any.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Scriven?
I understand that we have to decide what we're going to choose, but if we were to go with all your recommendations, with the timeframe to get the system up and installed...
So that's an excellent question. Look at the network infrastructure for a service provider to come here and upgrade that network infrastructure is probably going to take about two months to do that work. The same thing with the wireless. The voice over IP from beginning to end, and that would be from starting with the cabling and doing all that, I would say that will probably take about three months to do that work. Let me see. The video surveillance piece, that's probably the quickest out of all of them. You could probably get the video surveillance done within a six-to-eight week period. The interactive whiteboards, typically, it's going to take somebody, I think from beginning to end, will probably take about four to five hours per location, to give you an idea. Does that help?
Yeah, and I'm just curious what the practice has been in the past with something like this. Is it done off-hours or...?
Don't know, hasn't been done.
Typically, I'll tell you, typically, what will happen is whoever the service provider is, they're going to do all the configuration that they can during the day. And then anything that's impactful to teaching and learning, they're going to do it after school hours or over the weekend. When you look at things like voice, because of the criticality of voice, we would recommend that you would do a voice cutover until a Friday night. So if there's any issues, you have the entire weekend to get yourselves up and running before Monday, when school goes back into session.
Yeah, I was going to make my next question, mitigating any, you know, interruption into the service and stuff like that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I can also tell you, so we do this all the time, we do these types of installations all the time. We will set a stage, everything up, and for example, for a network upgrade, we would do one closet at a time. So we would schedule one closet so we know it's in a concentrated area within the school, get that one up and running, and maybe we might do one closet tonight, and we might do multiple closets tonight, but it'll give you the idea, and then just keep moving on until you're done.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Does Custom Computer Specials, that's who you guys work for? Do you guys actually install this, these devices?
We do.
You run the wires?
We do.
All in-house?
We do.
No subcontracting?
The only subcontracting that we do is we'll bring in cabling contractors to help us, depending upon the amount of work that's done. Other than that, we do everything. We have a full-service, full-time employee base that does all the engineering work.
So when you say cabling, someone that actually pulls the wire?
Yes, exactly.
You do not do that, or you...?
No, we typically will outsource that. So we have partners that we work with to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Fred?
Couple things. One, where we have a middle school project, I would go under the assumption that we could, you know, try and put off whatever we could for the middle school until we know what direction that's heading. What about wireless VOIP phones?
So wireless VOIP phones are available. I can tell you typically, the wireless infrastructure that's available now, so if you went with the standard that's out today and you haven't upgraded yet, you're probably going to get about five voice over IP phones on a single access point. Once you move to the new wireless technology, you'll probably get, I would say, between seven and 10 on an access point comfortably. Now, the voice over IP calls, they can be compressed. A typical call is about 81K. You can compress them down to about 24K, and that's something you, we, the provider would have to work on, because you're also going to be competing with the regular wireless traffic that might be in a classroom, but it definitely is something that's available.
And you could do a hybrid where a phone in a classroom that's utilized more for an emergency or not utilized on a, you know, heavy traffic basis. You could possibly pay some money with that by using a VOIP, you know, wireless phone as opposed to a hardwired, and then obviously, central offices, you know, etc. could have wired phones. You could do the hybrid easily enough, correct?
Yep, that's absolutely correct. And then the other option is you could also do a soft phone that would run on, for example, a teacher or an administrator's laptop, and then they would use a headset or just talk openly into the laptop like they would do on a Zoom call.
Yeah, and would you provide that software, or are we looking at, you know, buying three or something like that?
Nope. Usually, all of the voice over IP manufacturers have their own version of the soft phone. So depending upon which solution you went with, they would have an option available for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Go ahead, George.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Custom Computer for coming out, and then I'd like to just offer the next set of where do we go from here type thing. My feeling would be, talking with Steve, is that we would then move into taking this back to the facilities and subcommittee capital group, and that we would really flesh this out. I think the materials that are presented to us tonight in the master report, and also presented to us of what we just saw, would help us to have a framework by which we can start making some decisions, whatever those may be. I also think that Steve was vital to the rollout of this, so I would suggest that Steve come back to our next meeting, also Steve Burke, so that then we can start to get into the meat and potatoes of it, as you were, to see what's best for the district. If at such time that subcommittee meeting has greater questions that we would need guidance from, then we would see our friends at Custom Computer and move on from there. If I can also jog your memory, last year, they were the company that we first brought in to do the total needs assessment, but that wasn't as granular as you see now with costs associated to it. One further thing, just so we're all on the same page, is that this would still go, if a project at the rate of the expense were to go out, it would have to fall under 30B, you'd have to have the request for proposals, and you'd have to get, you know, the contractors from there after getting the quotes that are needed to by law. So this Custom Computer did it for us in the sense of, here's our problems, here's our systems, and then from there, we get to decide what it is we need to attack, address, and how. So I think my suggestion to Jeff and to Bob and all of you would be, is to let's take this up in the facilities and capital subcommittee from there. But thank you very much, I appreciate all of this.
Any questions, anyone before they go on? Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Very comprehensive report.
Thank you.
It looks like it took quite a bit of time to do. Yes, Fred, go ahead.
George, I want to thank you for that synopsis. I think that's, you know, hits the nail right on the head. It's obvious that we're at a very critical juncture, and I think that we need to, you know, bring a good plan forward and also get our hands involved after the fact and, you know, move forward. We found recently how devastating it can be to not have the right technology in place, because you never know what can happen, as we've discovered over the past 12 months.
Absolutely.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Very comprehensive, very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you.
Okay, next up, and I apologize, Anna, you've been waiting patiently, I walked right over the student advisory report. And I know you wanted to hear about our phone system and technology, so come on up. I'm going to leave that there for now, I'm standing, Mike, because I can just about see either one of you. Thank you for your patience, young lady. Shoot.
Good evening. My name is Anna Flynn, and I am from the class of 2022. Coming from a student's point of view here at Whitman Hansen, I've noticed we are all carrying feelings of fatigue throughout the day. I've heard that it may be due to the fact we do not have much to look forward to when it comes to high school-related activities, such as prom. Many have pointed out they miss seeing their friends and classmates in the school building. On the other hand, I know that my peers and I are excited for sports to start back up again in the spring. But I also know that there is still a constant fear about the COVID-19 virus being spread amongst players. I've heard a lot of good news about students winning the art contest, and the band class being able to send a couple few talented individuals off to Semsba. I wish them all good luck. In addition, DECA did extremely well at their regional competition and are able to continue on to the next level. I wish them all good luck as well. Key Club came up with an extraordinary idea to have a virtual club and activities fair for the underclassmen who are unfamiliar with all the opportunities that Whitman Hansen offers when it comes to extracurriculars. They hope to excite some of the freshmen and sophomores so they can have an eye into what each club is really about. Finally, it has shown within the student body that we are all looking forward to some time off from their screens over the February break. I've heard from many individuals that they have never been more ready to be off of their laptops. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Anna? Again, thank you for your patience, young lady. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, an entertaining motion to approve the minutes of January 13, 2021.
Second by Mr. Boyce.
Moved by Mr. Colady, second by Mr. Boyce. Discussion? Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you. Next up, Wendy Price, President of National Association of, excuse me, School Psychologists.
So I'm not sure if everyone knows Dr. Price. Wendy is one of our high school school psychologists who's been on sabbatical this year as the president of the National Association of School Psychs, and she wanted to speak to you about her experience a little bit and speak about our program here.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having me. I especially wanted to come today because I owe a special thank you to the administrators of Whitman Hansen Regional School District. As you can see, I'm currently the president of NASP, which is a professional association that represents more than 25,000 school psychologists and related professionals throughout the United States and an additional 25 countries worldwide. So we are the world's largest organization of school psychologists, and our aim is to advance effective practices to improve students' learning behavior and mental health. And really, we want all children to thrive in school, at home, and throughout life. A little history, those of you may recognize the old high school from 1,000 years ago. Before I became a school psychologist, I had stayed home with my children for nine years, and once they went to school full-time, I decided to go to grad school. And I got my masters and my CAGS back in 2000 and 2001. And in the spring of 2001, I was hired as a per diem school psych to work with the backlog of testing at the Old Park Ave School. And then that fall, I started here full-time at the high school under Bruce Preston, and I have not gone anywhere since, because I've just absolutely loved every second of being part of this district. What these administrators throughout this district, especially Jeff, have done is allowed me to really expand my role as a school psychologist here at Whitman Hansen. I've always been able to do whatever my heart desired in terms of my role. Jeff especially had always said, "You go, girl." Like, "You just do whatever you need to do, and, you know, the benefit will be Whitman Hansen." And I've just thoroughly enjoyed acting as a school psychologist here. And part of my role here includes crisis response, individual and group counseling. I consult with teachers around students and families. I've been able to give professional development presentations. One of the biggest parts of my role is conducting comprehensive psych ed assessments for social, emotional difficulties, mental health, and learning disabilities. I also get to present in classrooms on mental health and social emotional learning. And for many years, I've been the co-faculty advisor of our Gender Sexuality Alliance, the Rainbow Alliance. In addition to my role here at Whitman Hansen, the district administrators have especially supported my professional growth and my leadership development. For instance, when I went back to get my doctorate in school psychology from William James back in 2015, you know, there were times that I had to give a presentation at 3:00 in Newton, and I had to leave, you know, 20 minutes early from my job so I could make it through the traffic and everything, and Jeff never, never faulted me for it and always said, "You know, it's something that you need to do, I support you 100%." And so I was, I was always able to kind of follow my dreams. Since 2001, I have been able to immerse myself in leadership at both the state and national level, serving as president of the Massachusetts School Psych Association. From there, I was elected as a national delegate for two terms, and then the 13 delegates from the Northeast elected me to represent them on the NASP Board of Directors. And from there, I, I ran for NASP secretary and was elected, and then I've just become NASP president for this incredible COVID year. So not exactly what I thought it was going to be in for, but it's been enjoyable nonetheless. And people usually, you know, will say, "Well, when, when do you get to do all of this stuff? Do you have to miss time from your, your job to do it?" And, you know, the answer, truthfully, is no. The majority of my leadership stuff happens after school, on weekends, during summer vacation. Every February vacation since 2001, I've spent traveling to the national convention just because that's when it happens to be held. So I've never really had a February vacation, other than going to professor... vacation, other than going to professional development. And I, and I do it during school holidays. Over the 20 years that I've been here at Whitman Hansen, I presented all over the country. This year, it's been, you know, largely via Zoom, as you see over on the right-hand side. But I've really enjoyed being able to see the way that other districts and states look at mental health across the country. And one of the things that I have particularly enjoyed is letting people know about Whitman Hansen. When I'm doing presentations, either, a couple of my specialties are positive psychology, so trying to find strength-based approach to students. I do a lot of presentations on supporting students who self-harm. So I give a primer for school mental health workers on kids that cut. And I also give presentations on what's school mental health people need to know about eating disorders, which is particularly relevant to my work here at the high school. So I, I've just really enjoyed traveling around. And always part of my presentations, and Jeff would always laugh when I would show him these slides, I, I always talk about Whitman Hansen. And I always show slides of the school, and I, I show them my, my card, my business card at the end if people have questions. And nobody can believe that I work in such a beautiful building, but I remind them that I used to work in the old high school where there was a chipmunk running through my office. And probably the highlight of this presidential year for me as NASP president is I have been invited to participate in several external stakeholder meetings with President-elect Joe Biden's transition team. And part of the, the joy of doing that was not only kind of bragging about what we're doing at NASP as on the national scene for students across the country, I also was able to talk as a practitioner of my years at Whitman Hansen. And specifically talking to President Biden's team about Whitman Hansen's response to COVID and the mental health supports and programs that we have here at the high school. I can't tell you just how honored I was to, to have been included with some of the people that, you know, I've read about in my textbooks, some of the, the biggest names in the country. And then there's little old me from, you know, Whitman Hansen Regional High School. But it was, it was really exciting to be able to participate. So what I've learned from my national experiences over the last 20 years is that I'm just so fortunate and extremely grateful to work for such a supportive and progressive district. You know, the values that we emphasize, especially around social, emotional health and emotional wellness cannot be understated. Our administration works collaboratively rather than combatively with educators and parents. I, I can't tell you the horror stories that I hear from districts all across the country, big and small, rural and suburban, and, you know, big city. I mean, it's just, it's, it's incredible when I compare what I hear to my own experiences. I've also really learned that when mental health becomes a priority, students really do thrive. If, if kids aren't emotionally available for learning, there's no learning going on. And, you know, you see things like higher test scores and a decrease in suicide rates and overall well-being, and school climate improves when mental health is a priority. And while there's always a need for more mental health staff, I've learned that we are actually, as a district, we're actually better off than a lot of districts in this country. And I come back and I'll say to Jeff, you know, "You wouldn't believe what's happening in California, or you wouldn't believe what somebody was telling me in Wyoming." And, you know, I, we're a regional school district on the South Shore, Massachusetts, with, we're not, we're not a big district, but man, we, we pack a lot into what we do for our students and our families. So I wanted to take this opportunity. One of the things that I've really enjoyed doing as president is I'm able to present some presidential awards. And I couldn't think of anybody that I wanted to thank more than the administration and administrators of Whitman Hansen Regional School District, specifically Jeff and George and Lauren Matheson and Chris Jones, my principal, Dave Flecker, assistant principal, and Dr. Nikki Schneeweiss, who is my boss in special education. So I am going to present this NASP 2021 Presidential Award to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Administration in recognition of exceptional service to children and school psychology. So Jeff and George, I can just... I just need to get a picture because I'm actually going to be doing a presentation.
We can get a picture with both of you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Where's George?
You guys, you guys, you guys, dude.
He doesn't have his shorts on.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time.
So part of, part of Wendy's job is, is doing a lot with our other psychs in the district. So when she says we have, we do the crisis things and all this, I really feel we're in a really good spot to handle situations, and, and part of that is going to be transitioning kids back to school. I mean, Wendy talked about the social, emotional pieces of kids. We will talk about that a little bit later, but kids who haven't seen other kids for six to eight months coming back into a classroom, they're going to need some support. We're going to have to work out some strategies. Same thing with some of our teachers who are nervous and anxious. They need the social, emotional support. We're very grateful to have Wendy in a position like that to get us on the national stage. It's good to hear that we do a good job compared to others. So appreciate you in, in this award. I think all the administrative team does a great job, and, and we, we have a great social, emotional, from our adjustment counselors to our, our school counselors and our school psychs. School psychs just don't test. They get out there, they crisis plan. Sadly, we've had to use our school psychs as crisis managers because we've had some tragedy in the past. And it feels good when, when we have an issue to be able to give our kids the best response and the best support that we can. So thank you, Wendy, for that. We appreciate it. Yep, thanks, Bob. All right, I'm going to call, Gab, why don't you come on up. We have a presentation by Whitman Well. In your packet is the survey that you agreed to last year, probably prior to COVID. I don't even remember when the kids took the survey. Maybe we did it this year, but we talked about it last year. And Gabby from Whitman Well is going to talk a little bit about the survey, where, where we stand. You know, our partnership with Whitman Well and the Brockton area collaborative acronym that I can never remember. It really focuses on good choices for our students around drugs and alcohol and, and getting yourself help.
Awesome. Does everybody have a PowerPoint with them?
A packet?
Yep.
It's in your packet if you have your packet with you.
If not, I can, I have them if you want them.
Yeah, I'll take one.
Here it is, Chris. Where's the front look button?
Yes, I need one. I don't have that.
Anybody else need one?
I'll take one.
Is she good?
I'm good.
I'll take one.
I have one over there.
I don't see Sam Shaw.
Is it with all the percentages, which is... Oh, that's just the survey.
That's just... Oh, thank you.
Blank survey. Then there's one with the results with all the percentages. Is that...
I think it starts with DFC.
Yeah.
DFC or something.
I got one. Thank you.
No, you're right.
Thank you.
DFC and Sam Shaw. Oh, thanks very much.
I don't know what they're talking about.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Gabby Peruccio. I am the Prevention Grants Manager for High Point Treatment Center, and I work with Whitman Hansen Well to coordinate the substance use prevention efforts in Whitman and Hansen. So for those of you that have the survey results in front of you, they are, the survey that was taken last March, right before COVID, with students remotely. So it is before COVID. So this is the results on past third-day use of substance use, perception of risk, and then perception of peer and parental disapproval. So students in grades six, seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12 took the survey, and there were about 1,500 students that took it. And I'm going to go through some highlights of the survey. So I'm going to go by the middle and high school levels. The middle school was the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and so vaping was the most used substance out of all of them. 2% on average of the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders reported past third-day use of vaping. And then alcohol was next, followed by marijuana and prescription drugs. At the high school level, alcohol was the most used substance, with 27% of students reporting past third-day use. And then vaping and marijuana were the next most common, with 26% at each level reporting past third-day use. And then it's interesting to point out that the increase in cigarette use actually went up amongst seniors, and the percentage of students reporting prescription drug use at the ninth grade level also was interesting to point out as well. It was a bit higher than that of the 11th and the 12th graders. And then for past third-day use, it was also interesting to point out that 55% increase in alcohol use amongst the 11th graders to the 12th graders, and then a 53% increase in marijuana use amongst the 11th and 12th graders as well. So there's a, there's a jump between those two grade levels. The next piece of survey results was the perception of risk. So that's how students perceive each substance, substance to be, how harmful. We report that out by moderate to great risk that they report. And at the middle school level, marijuana and alcohol were perceived to be the least risky. And an average of 70% of middle school students thought that marijuana was of moderate to great risk. And then 74% of middle school students thought that alcohol was of moderate to great risk. Cigarettes were viewed as the riskiest. And then at the high school level, marijuana was perceived as the least risky behavior. The next riskiest behavior, according to the students, was drinking alcohol. And stop me if you have any questions. I go fast. For parental disapproval, this meant, this was, students were answering questions based on how they thought their parents would feel about each substance. So at the middle school level, for all middle school students, parental disapproval was reported at 96% or above for all substances. And students believed that parental disapproval for marijuana was the lowest, which it still was fairly high. At the high school, most high school students believed that their parents would think it is wrong to use any substance, with all substances being an average of about 91% or above except for marijuana. So that marijuana statistic, it was 80% of high school students believed that their parents would think it's wrong or very wrong to smoke marijuana. The next set of questions was on peer disapproval, so that meant students were reporting out that their, their peers or friends would think it's wrong or very wrong to use the substance. For the middle school students, students reported that peer disapproval of cigarettes and prescription drugs was the highest. And then vaping and marijuana were seen as the lowest. So students thought that their peers would think it's less risky to smoke marijuana and vape. And then based on our graphs, you can see that the peer perception of harm decreases as the grade level increases, and that was true for most substances. At the high school level, peer disapproval of prescription drugs was the highest. And then only 36% of students thought that their friends would think it's very wrong to smoke marijuana. And only 39% of students thought that their friends would think it's very wrong to vape. And that dropped significantly at the senior level. So up on the screen, you're looking at, you were looking at the, it's okay? The basic tables. I do have copies of this, these, this PowerPoint that you might not have, which I can share with you. That's kind of what I was just going off of. But that's the overall highlights. You'll all have the copy of all of the specifics. And we really like to just use this data, A, to meet our grant requirements, because Whitman and Hansen also receive funding from our department on prescription drugs, underage drinking, and marijuana prevention for youth under 18. Some of our funding specifically focuses at the middle school level. So each year, we're required to survey students, but also it's a great tool for Whitman Hansen Well to strategic plan, whether it's even meeting with students to tell current trends about substance use and see how they can get involved. So my ask for you tonight is, normally, we ask your permission to share the data with our coalition, Whitman Hansen Well, to do so. And if you're open to it, using the data specifically in ways to do social norming and social marketing in the community. So that's really in an aggregate sense, Whitman Hansen Well would present the data in, say, a social marketing campaign. So that's the first ask.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Boyce?
Yes. So do we know, first of all, that the percentages, it caught me a little off guard, all being in the 30% for the survey overview. Do we know what other districts are like?
So...
Comparatively, are they around the same or...?
Yeah, so we work with five different communities in the Brockton area: Whitman Hansen, Bridgewater, Rainham, Brockton, Rockland, East Bridgewater. And we do get those results, but we have the same protocol like this, but where we get approval from school committee to share those. So we typically, when we look at it in comparison to other districts, it's on an aggregate level, and it's, it's fairly similar from all districts. There are some increases or decreases in other areas, but pretty much we're seeing a low perception of harm around marijuana, alcohol being one of the more substances that is used in the past 30 days. So it's fairly similar, but all have different differences.
Okay. And do you mind if I ask, on the prescription drugs, and I know it's not prescribed to them, do we know anything on the, well, maybe they have a prescription, they're on a prescription, but, you know, they...
Sharing it?
Yeah. It be a shared or, or they're, they're trying someone else's, or, you know, it's a prescription, ibuprofen or whatever, over, something they've had over the counter and their friend had it or something. Do we know much in line with that data?
We don't specifically ask that question in here, but, so you wouldn't really get it captured in that, in that question specifically. I know often from focus group settings, we do find that a lot of students do share. If they are, they may be getting it from a friend or a loved one. So whether it's being shared or whether they're taking it out of their parent, the home. So we get that more on a qualitative data sense rather than this survey.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to just bombard you with questions, but I know we can get a little bit about their background, but, you know, like, is it possible in future ones to just kind of understand, like, their microenvironments, like, I don't know, who they are, and, and, I don't know, it can be household, or, you know, what school groups are in. And I only, this boggles my mind because I've, I've recently had a second cousin staying with me and brought her to Brockton High every single day. And, you know, you just wonder, very smart young lady, very intelligent, but you just often wonder, you know, what's her, and I met her friends and so forth. Generally, you always wonder what those microenvironments are and how they're affecting and so forth. So I don't know, more of an idea than a question.
We definitely think about that in terms of what experiences young people are exposed to and how that impacts substance use. So definitely, we take that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
One second, Dawn. You're asking us for permission to share it, and I don't know, we don't have anything, Michelle wasn't aware that you were going to ask us to vote on anything this evening. Who are you planning on sharing it with?
So I guess the initial request would be to share it with the coalition. So we meet regularly, and now we meet via Zoom. So typically, the people that come, attend the coalition, our coalition members, are people from the school department, sometimes faith-based organizations, or representatives that support our funding through the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office. So specifically... So, specifically, we would want to share it with Whitman-Hanson-Will. And that's where we'd want to start, and that would be the request.
Okay. Dawn?
I'll make a motion to share the information with your coalition.
A second. Made by Dawn, seconded by Chris Scriven. Fred?
I just want to verify, there's no personal information of any of the respondents that would be shared?
No.
No, Fred.
There's no personal information on any of the surveys, I don't believe, Fred.
I just wanted to verify that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Dawn?
So, it sounds like you'd be using the data for advocacy, or for, so maybe you would reference, you know, students in ninth grade have shown a percentage of X and this trend and so forth?
Definitely.
Do you accumulate the data over the years? We've been doing this survey, do you know how many years we have?
We have been doing it in Whitman-Hanson at least for five years or so.
So, are you compiling it? Can you see a trend with even the grades as they go from seventh, you know, 12th grade?
Yep, so-
And would you have any of that to maybe share at a later date?
Definitely. We could share that at a later date. We have access to, we have the same evaluator that we've been using, Kelly Research Associates, and they could definitely put together some trends for you.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I would just add a comment, because it looks like a large, the largest change in percentage from eighth to ninth grade, right? We see them transition from one school to another. And my ask would really be to see how we're partnering as a district with Whitman-Hanson-Will to really address some of these changes, and maybe our Students Against Destructive Decisions and our DARE program at the middle school, see how we can use this data too, and really how-
So, Whitman, Whitman-Will, they meet here, which is great, because they all come here for us. And sad is part of that, those meetings, they've worked hand-in-hand, doing effective educational presentations throughout the course of the year, and demonstrations, if you've seen at open houses, when we actually could come in live, there were different pieces, what was the one, where you set up the bedroom?
The Hidden and Plain site.
Hidden and Plain site. Our kids were interactive with that. So, yeah, we will continue to do that based on the numbers and the trends that we see. But they have a great collaborative approach with our kids so far. And I think our students who are in those two groups are very familiar with the people from the Will.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And it's definitely a goal of ours to work more with the middle schools, definitely, because of that jump from eighth to ninth grade.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move to the vote. And by the way, thank you so much. These surveys are so helpful, as you can see, it shows you the trends and what's going on. I have a motion to second. Hillary?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
unanimous. Thank you.
Can I have one more ask?
Please come back to us with some, the five-year plan that you've had, so we can kind of look at the trend too.
Definitely.
Because as you can see, we're all concerned where this is going and where it's-
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
What's your second ask?
Can we survey again this year?
I have no issues with that, as long as the committee-
I entertain a motion to-
I make that motion, Mr. Hayes?
Second.
Mr. Small, seconded by-
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce. Discussions. It's the same criteria, no names, no, it's unanimous. Okay.
And it's up to the school if you want to do it online or in person. So, we can talk about that after.
I have a motion, any further discussion?
When will they administer the survey?
When?
Up to the school principals, but it can be starting now until hopefully, yeah, yeah. Anytime between now-
So, if you motioned it and you wrote it, and I'll work with Gabby, we'll get it out and we'll take care of it.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion to second. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Sniffing?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Small?
Yes.
unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabby.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Before we get into COVID, I'm going to ask George to come up and talk a little bit about the elementary mid-year assessment. Please.
So, folks, I just wanted, beginning of the school year, we had our first assessment. This is our second mid-year assessment. So, what happened was students in grades K to five, once again, took their mid-year assessment in math, and they took their mid-year assessment in ELA or reading. What happened last time we did this was, I talked about, I gave a lot of specifics, and then we followed up with the paperwork and the background and the backup at the next month. So, we've taken a lot in from people tonight. This podium's burning up with everybody that's spoken so far. So, I just want to give you a couple of high-level pieces, and then I will follow up with what we talked about last month, which was the grade level across the district determinations. But when we talk about the completed winter benchmarks for math, I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we talk about overall for math, from the beginning of the year to now, we have gone, we have moved up 19, we have moved 19% higher, or we went from 21% on grade level to now 40% on grade level in just math. We've also then restricted, or our Tier Twos, which are kids that need some support, has gone from 63% of students to now 51% of students. And we've also closed the gap in our serious high-needs areas down to 9%. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. We're going to talk about things later that we can do to address this. But in math, we are moving more students to grade level, and we've seen significant progress of 19% from our initial beginning-of-year term to now our mid-year report. So, from that perspective, things are going well. When we look at HMH, or our reading growth measure, when we look at K to two, now K to two was not always part of our new HMH program, because they hadn't developed it. So, we use the method that's called DIBELS. DIBELS is a tried-and-true piece. It's been around for, well, it's been around since at least Jeff and I have been alive, I believe. And what that does is it measures at-risk. So, our K to two students went from, at the beginning of the school year, across K to two, they were at 78% at-risk, and now that has dropped to 50% at-risk. So, yes, we still have a lot of work to do, but these are our students who have come to us since March, some just beginning formal school as they are, and we're taking them where they were, and we're making some strides with them. As we go from three to five, those trends get better, because we now have 61% of our students in September were at or above grade level, and now 74% of those students are at or above grade level. So, from K to five, it's not apples to apples. We have to look at K to two, which is a DIBELS product, which looks at weakness. And then we look from three to five in the Holton-Mifflin Harcourt, which is the first year of the program that we're in, and that looks at reading level at or above. And now we've moved to 74% of those students at or above. And that's across the district for every child. I will give you, provide you with some data that you can look at and have that talks about what each grade level is performing at. But we roughly, we, there were a few students that didn't get in, just because there were some kids out on quarantine at the time during our window, because that was after the holidays. But we, we were over 98% of students who participated in this and that were able to do it. What's going to happen then is that we take these pieces, we take the kids who are in need, and we work on some of our interventions that we have now for this year currently. But as we move into the end of the school year, we'll do it once again. Then we start looking at what is the regression plan for not only the summer, but as we enter the next school year. Because I do believe that as we enter the next school year, this, whether it's a COVID relapse, whether it's just an environmental piece, whether it's just the makeup of students, we need to make sure that we have a plan that addresses this intervention piece from a district level, and then a school level and a classroom level. And that's some of the things that Jeff will be talking about as we move forward in talks about what next year looks like. But progressing, gaps are getting smaller, gaps are large, but they're smaller than what they were at the beginning of the school year, and more kids are reading at or above grade level as we get into the higher-up elementary years of three to five.
Chris?
So, is, have we done this in previous years as well?
No.
Okay, so this is the first year?
Yes.
So, there's not really a way to kind of benchmark? So, I know you're going to give us some data. So, it would've been interesting to see how we progress this year compared to previous years. So, it seems like this will be the-
So, what's taken place in previous years is that we did it only for students who we felt from a prescreener, or we felt in front of the teacher were at risk, and then we did what's called this DIBELS test or something like that. The approach we decided to take this year with our new programs in elementary and math and ELA was to do it for everybody and start that process, start what you're asking for now. So, now we can only compare the beginning of the year to the middle of the year to the end of the year, and as the years go on, we'll have a baseline.
Do you have broader data from other districts that have done something? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, using that methodology, are we, how are we seeing that movement in terms of progression this year, given that it is a COVID year, say, to pass to store of years as a global progress?
I know that if we look at what, without getting too much into it, if we look at what's called the district progress to, there's a thing that's called district progress to annual typical growth, and that is based on everybody who takes these types of tests, that we are slightly below 50%, which is the typical growth for mid-year. That is based on everybody that takes a DIBELS test.
So, that's not just for this year you're talking about?
Right. And we also have to understand that if you look at, like, DIBELS tests you where you should be at the middle of the year, if you were in school every single day and you didn't have any regret, you know, in March, it didn't happen last year. So, when you look at it that way, we're making some decent strides. But we don't have all, as we go through this, we'll have more data to build upon for ourselves.
Hillary?
So, rightfully so, you're talking about students at risk who are performing not at grade level. So, my question is, are there students who at the beginning of the year were performing at grade level and now are perhaps above grade level? And are we making sure that we're doing something for those students to challenge them as well, to make sure they continue to progress, if that's the case?
Right. So, one of the things that's built into this program is, yes, we do have those. We have students who came in at grade level already. So, I'm a fourth grader, I already come in at what's called a 4.4, because some of these measurements are done by month. So, you're a 4.1 if that's September, or 4.2 October, and so forth. So, what we're trying to do right now is that, once we've identified those students, we are then trying to say, okay, what do we do for them? Some of the things we're trying to do is from our new program. New program does have leveled readers, it's the Rigby system, so that they can get a book that extends their level. So, you always want to, in English, you know, make sure that you're reading at or above your target area, so that you can extend your vocabulary, extend your comprehension, so that program allows it. We also use what's called EPIC. EPIC is the online format for the library that is also tied to specific reading levels, whether it's FAMAS or FANEL, or whether it's Rigby. So, we've also tried to do that. What we're going to try to do from now on, and what we're allowing this to do from now on, is to say, if you score at or above grade levels, what type of interventions then do we have for you? So, we sometimes tend to focus all the time on the students that are not making it and moving them forward. But one of the plans we have is to say, what do we do for those kids at the higher level so they can still be challenged? That's part of the plan that will be forthcoming.
Just curious if you could speak to ways in which this data is collected, like, how is it analyzed? How is it?
Sure. So, what takes place is that, we have a window. So, if we take the iReady program, so, iReady program is a math program. So, every student takes their appropriate leveled test. So, we all start on the same playing field. So, if you're talking in September, there's a two-week window, the students take it. So, now the students take it relatively cold. The assumption is, is that they take their previous knowledge, they see what happens, and then they get the score, and we move on from there. So, once they take that data, once they take that test, we're able to take that data, and we're able to compare it all the way down to the individual, if it's math, we're able to take it down to what should a fourth grader know, based on the standards of previous, based on the standards of what they're going to learn. And we can track all of those data points. And it even gets so granular now in this system, that I can identify that student X is weak in a geometry strand that should have been attacked in second grade. Now, you might not get to that strand in fourth grade unless it's only in a topic related to it. So, there's always going to be a weakness area. But what this iRead program does now, or another program, either MobiMax or iXL, which we use, which are online remediation, we can now go target those second-grade skills. So, a student has the ability that when he logs on to his iRead program, or i, excuse me, iMath, or the iReady program, which is for math, he logs on, and his lessons will target those second-grade missed skills. However, when he's learning the math lesson in the day with his teacher, they're still at grade level. So, the concept now is that we can remediate and while still learning grade-level skills. The iReady program says that if you do it for a minimum 45 minutes a week, that's either at home, or that's either in the classroom, or a combination of both, then you should, over the course of one school year's time, be able to remediate what you've missed. So that when you get to higher level, algebra, whatever, you'll have that, you'll have those things taken care of. So, we try to attack both, what you missed and while still learning at grade level, within the concept of the classroom, so you don't have to get pulled out.
I, can I, sorry, I have a follow-up question. So, with iReady, for example, right? Because the skills are a little bit more complex than reading.
Yep.
If a student masters and is above grade level, and so the iReady program like pumps them into the next strand or the next standard, right? So, does iReady offer instruction? So, if a child is above the grade level, above third grade, whatever kind of math, they go in, they don't need to wait for the teacher to instruct them, there's an iReady that will give them lessons?
They have what's called MyPath.
Okay.
So, as a result of their test, they have what's called MyPath. So, MyPath will take them where they're at and extend it. So, and that's done on 45 minutes to 60 minutes a week, like I just talked about. Now, if they have deficits, then the teacher who has the report of their deficits can go online and assign specific lessons to meet their deficit areas. However, if you don't have deficit areas, or you're already above, your path adjusts, it's sort of to the level of your failure. So, if you never fail, you keep moving forward and you keep moving higher. And that's what it does. We also have MobiMax, which is another system that allows for that, and then we have iXL. And I think the combination of what's called iXL and iReady together really allow you to target those specific things that you need, for not only those that need it, but for those that can keep going. So, it does allow it, because it's, it really just, it creates, it's funny, because technology now allows assistance to be made, so that Chris Scriven, if he's doing well, he can keep going. So, if Bob Hayes has an issue, it can be stopped, remediated, and we can move forward that way too.
That's ours.
I was going to say Jeff, but that was the easy-
Anyone else?
That was the easy target.
Chris is always accelerating.
We're good.
Thanks, George.
So, I'm going to go into the COVID update a little bit, and then we're going to talk a little bit about return to school. But before I get into it, I got a text from Deputy Chief O'Brien from the Hanson Fire Department. I was going to go to school committee tonight, but I just wanted to express my personal gratitude to the administrators, from the town of Hanson, to the administrators, Bill Trantor, Lisa Godbout, and Lisa Tobin. Lisa and Lisa fit right in with us. This was from their Friday night clinic that they had, they had a vaccination clinic on Friday afternoon for 75-plus in the town of Hanson. Lisa and Lisa fit right in, they did the vaccinations and worked right till the very end, and have offered to help us out with other clinics if we have them. This is what teamwork's all about, and having departments work together is all about. So, I just wanted to share with you, Lisa Godbout, Lisa Tobin spent the day at Hanson until the night, didn't ask for anything. They've been willing to do that in Whitman as well. So, as these clinics roll out, our school nurses have stepped right up to say, whatever you need for both communities will help you, will administer the shots. And according to them, it was flawless on Friday, so it was very good.
I just wanted to comment, I, at one point, had a question, and Lisa like caught back to me like that, and it was really, you know, she's, could answer anything I had for her, and she was, you know, she's obviously doing a great job.
We appreciate that, because Lisa has done a phenomenal job in a crisis situation. And as you know, COVID is, it changes daily. We got through November and December, the rush with both health departments, and I think she's done a phenomenal job. We quarantined 13 staff, that included the four positive staff, and approximately 123 students were in some phase of quarantine. So it's still there, it hasn't gone away. Our numbers in the communities have gone down, but we're still in the process of quarantining students and quarantining staff due to positivity rates. So that's the general oversight of COVID where we are in the district. As you know, last week, I sent out a survey on Friday. It seemed like the wheels of the bus came off in the South Shore a little bit with some announcements of some schools with a full return to school. Let me take you back to August, way back when, when we were still in the early stages of COVID after summer break, when we sat in this room and George and I presented our three plans of return, and this school committee affirmed that the most important thing to them was the safety and security, and safety and health of our staff and our kids. And so far, that's been true. And I have nothing to doubt that that's in the first piece of what we have in our hearts and our minds. And we put forth a couple of plans, a full in-person plan, a hybrid plan, and our remote plan, and you chose the hybrid plan. And out of that, we had quite a few students ask, or parents asked for a full remote plan outside. They never wanted to come to school. So we came across and put together a full K-8 remote plan for our students, which now, and I'm going to show you the numbers in a little bit, students K-8 have a teacher. And as that grew, there were 20 or 25, and as that grew to 40, we hired another teacher. So that the numbers at remote were relatively manageable for the two teachers. Now, that doesn't mean that if Mike Jones was in full remote right up front, and then as that class moved, we picked, we chose students to go to that second teacher. Now, there's been some feedback and some criticism that we just didn't break apart the classes. What we wanted to do was keep kids like with the teacher that they had. So say I had 30 students in a class and 10 more came in, I didn't want to take 10 out of that first class, grade one, to put with that other new teacher that we had, if that makes any sense. We kept them together, they're not all together all the time, they kind of co-teach, and it's worked relatively well. I think the responses Mr. Grable has gotten from our full remote program has been outstanding. With that, we actually hired quite a few folks, because some of our kids left the classroom to go to remote, and some of our teachers were medically compromised or asked to teach remote. I informed the committee as we went, we have some long-term subs across the district that are in classrooms. That cost us, that was an expense, and you've heard from John about our costs of COVID and what we're asking to get reimbursed through the CARES Act. At the secondary level, at grade nine, 10, 11, 12, we were live streaming. Now, I know we talked about this, and we worked with the association to get high school teachers live streaming, so that they could actually teach a class and have their students who are home on that hybrid model, so half of their class was home. And then the kids that decided to go remote were always remote, but they were connected via that live stream. Okay? And that's worked relatively well. Pros and cons to that. Student engagement is challenging when you're just at home on a computer and you're never involved. Student attendance is challenging at times, but that's worked through now. Again, moving through this year, the safety, security, or safety and health of our kids was in the forefront. This committee also affirmed in August, and again in December, when I brought this up, that we were going to be at a six-foot socially distant classroom experience. We've always been at six feet in our lunchrooms, because CDC guidelines have said all along, they recommend six feet of distance, no matter what, and I read them again tonight, unless you live with someone, you're supposed to keep six feet apart. And especially when you have your mask off, they want six feet plus. So we've created our lunchrooms, which are sometimes classrooms and cafeterias, to have kids six feet plus apart, so that we've maintained that social distance, what you have asked for, and then again in December. So now we've gotten through the November rush, we've gotten through the December crush of COVID, our hospitalizations are down, our numbers are actually down. We kind of went through a span of having quite a few kids and some teachers out. If you recall, I had to shut the high school down for a couple of days because we couldn't staff it. So, last week, a few districts had said, we're going to open up, and I've been on calls with superintendents, we're all in it together, so to speak, and we talk, and there's been some huge community push to get students in. I think that's our goal. Bottom line, if I can get students in here, that's what I want to do. It would be awesome for our teachers, it would be great for me personally to get kids back in and have some sense of normalcy as we go. But the tenants that you have asked me, my team, George, to make sure we maintain safety and secure, and health-wise, we haven't moved off of that six-foot recommendation requirement that you've given me. So on Friday, or Thursday, the administrative team and I put together a survey. Got knocked a little bit on the survey from some folks, because they perceived that as negative. I apologize if it came off as negative, but I think when I wrote in the survey, this is what is a strong potential, this is what will happen if we bring our kids back in. So I know the school committee was on that survey, but I'll read this out for folks that either didn't take the survey or are curious. This wasn't an intent to be negative, this was an intent to be truthful, because things are not going to be what they were in February or March 12th of 2019. If and when we return, and I feel we will return this year, things are going to be very different. Things are going to look very different, and the expectation from moms and dads is going to have to modify to that difference. First being social distancing. I think even if we have our teachers vaccinated, and right now, I don't know when that's going to happen. It was supposed to happen already. So there's frustration growing among the teaching ranks. My wife included, I hear it every day, they're feeling like they're being pushed out, even though there's a call to get kids back in. So we're going to maintain social distancing of six feet, and that might modify as we get in, but around their desks. So right now, in a classroom, there's a six-foot barrier, so to speak, before your kids get in front of you. And we've been in very elementary class, and I will tell you, our teachers get down with kids, they don't spend an inordinate amount of time with kids, but they are still teaching kids when they're in the building. By eyeballing where we are in the district, we are at six feet in every classroom, but if I put kids back in, if the hybrids combine, we will be at three feet, if that's where this committee goes, and there will be some areas where it might be less. I was in a classroom, it's a Spanish classroom upstairs, there's 30 students on that roster. 30 kids would be in that classroom. There is no way to keep three feet of distance. We have put kids close together before, it's going to be tight. The high school has 87 sections of 24 or more right now this semester. That means not every class, but if a kid moves, if he has three electives on that, there are 87 sections of classes in the high school over a seven, six-period day, that would have, that have 24 more on their roster. That doesn't mean, that means right now, if every kid came back to school, they would be in there. Okay? If kids still stay remote, there might not be. Movement. If we talk about movement, this school, this high school in particular, has 1,135 students in that, in this. Right now, there's 200 kids that are remote, drop that down to 900. If 900 kids came in, right now, we're averaging 400-plus students a day in here, you're going to double that size, you're going to double the hallway traffic. We still haven't gotten recommendations about locker use. So if you know your high school kids who carry backpacks, if they do carry backpacks, or jackets or whatever, it's going to be a little more congested. Contact tracing will be much more difficult than it is now. Just by adding people will be a challenge. And every challenge, don't get me wrong, with every challenge, we can modify and we can overcome the challenge. But I feel, parents need to know this, that this is going to be a change. Lunches. Right now, we eat in the high school cafeteria, we eat in the gymnasium for some of our students here. At Whitman Middle School, the kids eat in the cafeteria six feet apart. At Hanson Middle School, they eat in their classrooms. At Duval School, they eat in the cafeteria. At Conley School, they eat in the cafeteria, and at Indian Head, they eat in the cafeteria. And they're socially distant, meaning kids sit the same way and they're apart. That might change. I won't be able to double the size of those students in that cafeteria. One of the recommendations might be, half the kids eat in the classroom, half the kids eat in the cafeteria. I lose supervision, because at some point, I don't have enough people to supervise. That means we can modify, but some kids, and here's a for instance, you know, I'm best friends with George, he has hot lunch, I have cold lunch, he has to go to the cafeteria, I have to stay here. Moms and dads need to understand that, that it's not going to be business as usual. In one of the communities that I know about, the kids eat on the floor. So they have a blanket and they go and they sit on the floor, all right? So that might be a possibility. We might be eating in hallways, we might be eating in the gymnasium, we might be eating in the bleachers. If we're doing that, that means that PE class or that related arts class might not be in the gym, they might be outside. It's going to look different. Again, nothing that we can't overcome, but I think it's important that parents understand that things will be different. Academically, we're going to be very challenged at the secondary level in this building to come back in full and keep a remote piece of that live stream. If you're trying to teach and you have a class of 20 in front of you, and then two on screen or three on screen, the level of engagement is just not going to be there. And I don't know if it's equitable or fair to either the teacher or the student to try to do both. So that's going to be a real challenge. And I also know that we have to educate our high school kids, so that becomes a problem. One of the gives was, we spent a lot of money on our remote program for our students to be in remote. I don't necessarily have the capital right now to change or modify the whole high school program if everybody comes back. That's one piece of it. At the middle level, we have a very successful middle-level remote program. However, if parents choose not to come to school because we modify the hybrid model, I don't have any space in that remote platform for those students to go. So if we say, yes, we're coming back in, I don't have any space in those classrooms. Remember, I have one sixth-grade teacher, two seventh-grade teachers, and two eighth-grade teachers, they're maxed out, the classes are already full. So I don't have movement there yet. Again, a challenge, it's something that you as a committee need to know. These are the pieces that if we go back in full, or if you decide, vote, and we come up with a date. Elementary school, same thing. I don't necessarily have movement. If parents don't want to send their kid back to school full-time, I can't run a remote program, a hybrid program, and a full in-person. We have to make a choice on where we're at, and I necessarily don't have any room in the elementary classrooms for any parent to say, I don't want my kid to be in school right now, I want him in remote. That'd be another adjustment, another cost somewhere we go. And busing, right now. And I'm sure this is going to change tomorrow. I have a 2:30 conference call with Commissioner of Education. We've been asking for a transportation update. Right now, currently, we have 24 kids on a bus. I'm sure that's going to change tomorrow. So, transportation might be out the door, but as if today, at 7:47 at night, I can only put 24 students on a bus. And right now, our buses aren't full. But that doesn't mean that if I put more on, or if I put the cohorts in, I'm over 30. There might be 15 on a bus one time, or 10 on a bus, but if the other cohort has 15 or 20, we're over the number that we're supposed to have on that bus. So those are some of just the facts that I have. Again, going back to trying to bring kids in, I think that's where we're at. We want to try to bring kids back in. And the survey, so we get to the survey, and I think every member has the survey in your packet a little bit. The survey says, survey says, I feel like Family Feud, you know, it's a good demographic of what we were looking for. And a couple of folks said, you're not going to get any good data out of this. Well, it is good data. One, yes or no? So 67, 66% of our families say, yes, I want full in-person, I understand what you put up front, I want full in-person. But I got 33.5% saying, no, I don't. So we're drilling down, and I'll get to this in a minute, drilling down to who those folks were that answered that question, no, I necessarily don't. Because if it's my remote kids, and I have spots for them, it's okay. But if it's my high school remote kids that don't want to come back, I necessarily don't have a spot for them, and we have to figure something out. This committee has to figure something out with me, and agree, and we have to agree to be able to educate those students. So right now, we have, we had 2,204 responses, and we asked every parent to fill out a response for each of their children, and whether or not they were in hybrid, whether or not they were in full remote. And this other document that I just passed out to you is the results really broken down by elementary in the survey, and I know folks at home don't have this. So, in the high school, 112 responses were full-remote folks, 85 were not in favor of coming back, and 27 were in favor. So we will add 27 students, I assume, from remote into our cohorts, or into a full-day or a full-in-person model. In the hybrid, there were 410 responses. 143 were not in favor, and 267 were in favor. So I have an issue right now with 143 kids, that potentially their parents don't necessarily want to send their kids in full-time. So what's the option? We will figure that out, or we will try to figure that out. I have 28 students that come in full-time that answered that question, three are not in favor of a full return, and 25 are in favor of a full return. At the middle level, 57 students full-remote, 49 are not in favor, and eight are in favor. Now, I can infuse those eight, because I don't know if they're Hanson Middle, and I don't, or Whitman Middle, and I don't know what grade level they are, I can probably infuse those eight, and those 49 can stay at home. Now, understanding that we have close to 4,000 kids and I only have 2,200 responses, these numbers might change a little, but just to give you an idea. In hybrid, 463 responses, 114 are not in favor of coming back, and 349 are. Again, we have a little bit of an issue, because I cannot move those 114 into a remote platform at the middle level. It's just not going to work. I don't have space. Elementary, 128 full-remote, 108 not in favor, and 20 in favor. Those 20, I assume, will be infused over K-1 through 5, or K-1 through 5 in the district. It shouldn't cause much of an issue. In hybrid, 636 responded, 128 are not in favor, 508 are in favor. I will not be able to move those students into a remote program if we come back in full and they don't want to come back. And we have 128 in-person students, 21 are not in favor of changing what's going on, and 107 are in favor. I didn't share with you the homeschool, they're very small numbers, and I didn't share with you pre-K, because they're low numbers. One of the reasons I brought up the remote piece is important, because I'll give you an idea of where we are in remote. At Hanson Middle School, in grade five, I have nine kids in remote. If those nine kids all came back into Hanson Middle School, they would have to infuse into their classrooms. And I think Cindy, your class right now is at 25? There's four sections, four sections or three sections, right?
Four.
Four sections, is that including Ms. Files, or is she the fifth? Four sections. So those nine kids could infuse into those sections, but they would add to their class sizes. Okay? So now, if Cindy took one of those students, and I'm not saying they are, but there's the potential for a parent, if a parent says, look, Jeff, I like the remote, but they're coming back in, I'm one of the two, and they're going to go into Cindy's class, it's going to add to 26. 26 in a classroom, at normal times, we've talked about it's too much, in COVID times is quite a bit. I worry about some of our elementaries. I'll take Conley for example. In fifth grade at Conley, I have 18 students in remote. Right now, my class sizes are 19, 20, 19, and 18. If I took 18 of those students and infused them into Conley, their classes are 25. And the reason, folks, that the class would be more, is going to be bigger, we took classroom teachers from Conley, Indian Head, Hanson Middle, and Duval to teach the remote kids. So grades one, two, three, four, five, and K have remote teachers that used to be classroom teachers, so they're there. And I can't pull them back, because people want remote. So, there's that give and take of these issues. And again, these issues are not issues that we can't overcome, but I have to tell folks where we're at, and the decisions that you guys are going to have to help me with and guide me through, and then make the decision on what we do to come back. The other piece out there is vaccinations. I know there's a high anxiety around my teaching staff of, they will feel much more comfortable, and Kevin and Cindy will do a survey to our teachers as well, but I know just through the grapevine, they will be much more comfortable when they get the vaccine, the second dose. And I've had school committee members tell me, Jeff, yes, I agree with them. Not everyone, not everyone's reached out to me, but a few members have said, I think, I'd feel more comfortable, too, if teachers are vaccinated. But that's not where we're at right now. So, and there doesn't seem to be a definitive when staff will be there. My hope is soon. I came to this committee in December, and I said, we should probably start talking about this. The other challenge I mentioned is I have all these desks that are locked away, and furniture that's locked away. February break was what we decided upon, was starting to move stuff back and build things. The issue I have is trapped tables at Whitman Middle School and tables at Indian Head. I don't have desks. I don't have those old desks. Kids were sitting at tables, they'd be close together, cheek to cheek some point. So it's a change, it's a shift. So in December, this committee at one point even said, let's make a motion to not talk about this for three months or 90 days. We decided that wasn't a good idea. In January... In January, I came to the committee and I said, we're gonna roll out a plan. And I threw out the date of April 1st, which it happens to be a Tuesday, so I would now say March 31st. You know, let's talk about that. And I remember the committee saying, okay, these are some of the parameters. Let's talk six feet. Let's talk immunization. And I also believe some of the folks on the committee said, geez, Jeff, that's an optimistic plan. Well, now, all of a sudden, we've shifted to, let's get kids back in March 1st. And that's not from you folks. That's from social media. That's from parents. And I understand 1,000%, you want your kids in school. And I think this committee, the priority will be now moving kids back into school. I said April 1st, I said March 31st. That's still the date that I have in my head. It could be the next week before April vacation. April vacation is the 19th this year. So we have a little flexibility around that time. But the month of March to try to assemble and get together a strategic piece for this committee to actually see what the spatial pieces will be like in the classrooms. And I will ask the chair to schedule the school committee for March 3rd where I can present some more information for you. The 24th is our budget meeting. The following week, I think we have a school committee meeting to look at the plan I can put in place. I expedited that a little bit. It's moving along a little quicker than we talked about last month, but that's okay. We'll do that. Looking at a target date, the association has been meeting with us either weekly since COVID or every other week and we met today. And I think they're on board with a safe return to school. I don't think there's anything more than our teachers wanna see their kids. They live for the job that they do and they've been doing a nice job. But they also are concerned about the language that's going out there that, oh, it's just safe. Because if you look back and you see where we are in our country right now, the CDC has not moved off of six feet since August. They have not moved off of that. Dr. Fauci has said, safe return to school. At socially distant, and I'll just read the guiding principles from today. Pull them off their website. Lowest risk, student and teachers engage in virtual-only classes and activities and events. Lowest risk. More risk, small in-person classes, activities and events. Groups of students stay together with the same teacher throughout the day, across school days, and groups do not miss. Students remain at least six feet apart and do not share objects. That's more risk. Highest risk, full-size in-person classes, activities and events. Students are not spaced apart, share classroom materials or supplies and mix between classes and activities. We do not share supplies. We stopped that in August. We have stayed at six feet apart since then. Mass DPH, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the WHO have said three to six feet. CDC hasn't moved off of that. If this committee tasks me to give you a plan at three feet, I can absolutely do that. If you want me to stay at six feet, I don't see any way I'm bringing back everybody. If you want me in between there, that's what we can shoot at. But I'm just telling you, the guidance from the CDC that we have followed, that we have said, has not changed. And in our culture, in our country right now, what has changed? We don't have a shot yet. We still have numbers. We still have people trying to get the shot. But now, we're coming back to school. What's different than November? Except I know parents are frustrated and they're worried. I get it. Dad too. I get it. And my job is to try to get your kids back. And I get it. And we're gonna work really hard to do that. But I also feel like folks are gonna be really disappointed if we come back without a good, solid, structured, safe plan and we have to go out again or if I have to send kids out for quarantine. I think I heard at one point, if you're thinking about a typical high school that has seven periods, if you're three feet apart, your socially distant group might be eight. And if you transition seven times, you're talking 56 kids in quarantine. Okay? That wipes out a classroom. That wipes out a football team. In elementary school, if you're a group of eight, that takes eight kids out of your classroom. And what we don't wanna do is transition our kids multiple times. I think Wendy Price was here talking about social emotional learning. Once we have a transition back to school, which will be a transition. School is gonna start and it's gonna be very different than it was. And in fact, one of the building elementary principals said it will be like September all over again. We're gonna have to build community. We're gonna have to build culture. We're gonna have to build things together with kids. And that's not a bad thing, but it will be different. And for our secondary kids, when they come back to school, it's not gonna be hanging out, just yapping a little bit. They're actually gonna have to do schoolwork. Talked to some high school kids today. They're excited to come back, but they're more excited to see their friends. They're not excited to do AP Calculus. They wanna see their friends and I get it. I totally do. So to the community, yes, we're working on a plan to get something out. Yes, I'm shooting, like I said in January, about a target of the first week of April. Yes, we'll work on it through the month of March. But these are the parameters that we have to work through. And I know since COVID started, we're not making everybody happy. I'm okay with that. But I wanna make sure we have everybody safe. I wanna make sure everybody's healthy. And I wanna make sure we can educate all our kids, not just the kids that are coming back to school. If we have kids with immunodeficiencies or can't come to school, right now, I'm struggling to make, to, quite honestly, to give them an education at the high school level without a cost, without a shift in what we do. I don't know how to solve that problem yet. Dr. Jones and I have already discussed that. We will figure something out, but it will not look like live streaming. It will be very different. And maybe students choose to do it, maybe students don't. We will be working with the association, again, around our MOU, to work through that. We wanna make sure our employees know what's coming. And I'll send out an email summarizing this to our staff today. But I wanted the community to know, there is something in place. One of the pieces that came out on social media and I shut it off over the weekend, we actually are thinking about this. It's not like, oof, you know, they don't have a plan. We've always had a plan, but we wanna make sure it's structured and good for all. Did have a parent say, you know, sometimes the truth, truth is hard to swallow, but we're telling you the truth. We're not gonna misguide you. I know some of my, you know, there's some, I think people stretch the truth sometimes in other districts about how far apart kids are, what they're actually doing. We're not gonna do that. If you want me to go under six feet, I'll do that. If you want me to stay at six feet, I'll do that. But this is what it's gonna take to get people back in to a full-day experience. And I just wanna let kids know or parents know, it will not look like March 12th of 2019. Kids will be in masks. Hallways will be more crowded. It will be a little, it'll be different. Kids right now are pretty comfortable keeping their socially distant. That's gonna bring in. Doesn't mean it's gonna be bad or they can't adapt to that. But that's where we're at right now. I'm really concerned about the remote program and those remote kids if we do decide to come back in. You saw the survey. I want you to digest a little bit about where it's at. We'll give updates over the next couple of weeks. I do wanna have another meeting on the 3rd where I can show you specifics and show you some graphics what a classroom looks like. A classroom at Duval, I was in first grade Duval on Friday afternoon. They can fit kids in almost six feet. Okay? They can. It's a big room. The classroom at Connolly in first grade is about as big as half of this and the kids were like this, even at six feet, looking at the desks. So it's a shift in building. It's a shift in grade level. It's a shift in body size. And it will be a shift in where we eat, how we play, how we, you know, have open campus potentially at the high school. There will be a lot of shifts. So I wanted to share that with the committee. You have the survey results. I can send you more information. I wanna thank Corin Mayette publicly for putting this together. The survey closed last night at 9:00. So I'm sorry for the handouts today. They're hot off the press at 4:00 today. But I wanted to share with you what we have. I appreciate the parents that have reached out and have voiced concerns or support or whatever and for answering the survey. And we'll be asking some more feedback as we go. But know upfront for this committee, I know you have a very difficult decision to make and we'll all share it together that we're gonna make some people happy and we're gonna make some people very upset. And we're gonna try to modify and work with that so that we can make everybody educated and adjusted socially to the experience when they do come back. It has never been out of my head this year that we weren't gonna come back. I think the good news about the vaccine made me very optimistic. When both fire departments said we can vaccinate our teachers the week after February break, I was ecstatic. So was our staff. And the next day, we found out we couldn't. And it's still, we're moving down the train. I know some districts are coming back without teachers being vaccinated. I'm not sure. I can only speak on behalf of my folks and what I've heard. Kevin or Cindy, do you wanna say anything about the teachers and your feeling? I know we've had a good conversation about it, but I'd love to hear from you guys. And I'm sure the committee would as well.
Well, sure. Thank you. Certainly echo everything you said. We've had a great working relationship. Been together, you know, every step of the way here certainly been ongoing and indeed what a challenge. I don't speak for everybody in a sense, but kind of the general consensus is definitely wanna get back in the classroom with kids. Obviously, that's what we, you know, we wanna do. But we wanna emphasize the safety aspect, right? And put everything in place to ensure that that's maintained, whether it's the distancing and the transportation to and from, the movement, if you would, in the halls, the desk arrangement. Certainly, the vaccination piece, once that confirmed, I think will be a huge factor and help maybe getting a spotlight or crosshairs, whatever you wanna call it, on a certain date. But up until this point, I think that's hopefully the next step that needs to happen and then obviously work with you to, you know, put together a plan. But yeah, I definitely want kids back, but we have to ensure the safety aspect of that across the board.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I know a lot of, obviously, what you said and will continue to, of course, work with you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Chris?
Yeah, so I think just in general, and I'm sure we can get into more tactical questions in a second in terms of distance and the like. I think there's certainly been a lot of discussion on this topic and this has certainly been a big push. And I think, I firmly believe everyone here, everyone in this room, every teacher, they wanna be in classrooms. They wanna be teaching kids. That's what they signed up to do. You didn't sign up to do Zoom, right? That's not, that's what everyone really wants to do. And I think, as you alluded to, Jeff, this is really about a community-based decision. But the community being the community of Whitman and Hanson, not just the students, not just the teacher, everyone that lives within those communities, right? Because, yeah, there's a lot of data that says kids are fine. There's a lot of data that says that's a transmission point. And there are a lot of people in these communities that could be impacted, right? So I think when we look at the big picture, I know people are tired. I know people are frustrated. We all are. Everyone is. I get it. But I think my plea to the parents and folks that are out there is we just gotta be patient and we've gotta think beyond just our individual little piece here. And I know that's our. But you're alluding to, well, we bring everyone back and we've got a whole bunch of kids that, what's their remote experience look like? That's a problem. Now, we could say, oh, my kid's not remote. They're hybrid. It doesn't impact me. But again, I think we're a community of women and Hanson. So it's our responsibility, all of us, to make sure that that happens. And I'm hoping we can move towards that. I looked at what some other people are doing. And I think right now, they're just trying to win the prize to be first. But winning the prize to be first doesn't mean you're gonna do it right. I mean, I've been around the block a few times in terms of trying to do things. Usually, if you're trying to be first, it's not always right. The vaccinations, I've talked to folks that are teachers. That second vaccination, a lot of folks are coming down with COVID-like symptoms. So what is it gonna look like when you have a school system and you get the second vaccination and none of the teachers come to work? So there are logistical considerations to try and do this right. So I think, hopefully, we can have some patience, work together, collaborate, So I think hopefully we can have some patience, work together, collaborate, make sure we get everyone included in the solution and figure it out. And I think we can, like you said, it's, we're almost there, this has been hard on everyone, but to just whipsaw, and I've talked to teachers in these districts and parents in these districts, to just say, we're going to go back and we'll figure it out, that, that's not, that's not going to be effective for anyone. So I think we're on the right course and I think we just all need to kind of work together to get there, and we will.
So one of the things, just to comment on that, and you talk about all kids and the vaccination, so I'll hit the vaccination first. The reason we're so excited about the vaccine being local and being our, our fire departments, we're going to do it on a Friday. So that second shot, if people were sick, it wouldn't be a workday. I, I have, I have great concern, right? I have great concerns right now, if it's just mass vac sites, that I'm going to have teachers just scheduling appointments, meaning a sick day out and a sick day after because of that. Because that's the only opportunity that you can have. It's, that's not for, for folks out in the community to, to, to be super concerned about, but the fact is, if, if Kevin gets a shot on a Tuesday or a Thursday and he's out of class on, on, on Friday because he's ill, because we have seen that symptom piece, Lisa Tobin, who we all just spoke about, said, I would highly recommend, are you, are we doing the mass vax on Fridays, even the first one, because we did have a nurse that had their first shot and was sick for 36 hours. So we can't function if we don't have nurses and we can't function if we don't have teachers. So that was a crux of that. The other piece about all kids, I, I got notified from Pembroke today that they're coming back to school, but one of the caveats is transportation. And if you can't transport your kid in cohort B, if my kid's cohort A, can't be, it's, you, you, the parents have to drive them. So I don't know if we as a district sit there and say, well, the second grader in Mont Ponce is in cohort B and mom and dad have to, or mom or dad or caretaker or grandma or whoever's home now has to drive them into school. Because that was what the email I got today was, it's up, it's parent responsibility. So that's another challenge. Again, not a challenge we can't overcome, but it's something that's out there that as a parent right away said, well, I don't, I got my kid going two days a week, we got that covered, I don't know how I'm going to get the other two covered now, and are they going to be accountable for that? And there's no education because they're not offering on, on another side of that. And I know Hanover did the same thing, that it's, it's, if you're in cohort A, you have a ride, if you're in cohort B, you don't have a ride. So I see that issue. So Chris, I want to make sure we get through those pieces, and if parents are willing to do that, and we can then cover it through buses or through a modification of the transportation, I'm good. But we are also a regional district that is by law required to bus our kids outside of a mile and a half. So I did text the commissioner and then I deleted the text because I thought it was a little snippy, and it said, you know, are you going to modify this for me? Because I, I'm bound by the law. But our conference call is tomorrow and hopefully we'll get some more information.
Dan?
As a parent, I want my kid back into the school. Definitely has to get back in here. As a school committee member, I don't think that's feasible right now or in the near future because our, our charge here is the safety of our employees, the children, everything like that. As the kids, I don't think they'll get sick from the COVID as much as teachers and adults. My fear is they get it, they bring it home to their loved ones or their relatives, elderly, elderly people, you know, it's, do not have that shot yet. We might not be able to bring these kids back until, you know, where like 75, 90% everybody in the country is vaccinated. To do so might be foolish, I mean, like Chris was saying, some of these schools might be trying to be number one. I don't think we should be number one in something like this for just safety reasons. Number two, like Jeff had said, with a busing like this, I mean, send that, send the text, I would have. It has to be removed, or we can't do this anyways. There's, you know, we're talking, yes, some of the buses might have a few kids on it, but we have to have it there in case a student needs it. Just because parents are driving their kids to school, they might say, I'm not doing it anymore, they have to be on that bus. And we're, we're, we're charged with making sure they're, they're supposed to be on that bus. So there's a lot of key things. And if they're moving this vaccination down the road piece for these teachers, we're talking April maybe or somewhere down the road. So trying to plan something right now until we can get those vaccinations in, we shouldn't even trying to, tried to do this yet until we know we can stack, making sure our staff and everybody district-wide is covered. It'd be kind of bad to put them at risk. I mean, I would love to see my kid go in, but.
Hillary?
Um.
Then Dawn?
I just.
Then Fred? Hillary, Dawn, Fred.
I have a couple of questions, and I think these are questions to maybe inform our decisions down the road. So first, I'm looking at the model that we have, and so currently right now with the adjustment made to the middle school, students in grades six through 12 are receiving synchronous instruction four days a week.
Correct.
But students in grades one through five are receiving two and a half days of synchronous instruction. I know that on the off days, they have the, so as a parent of elementary school students, that's concerning to me in the sense that they're not getting the same thing as other students in the district. So I also, because of what I do every day, understand the spacing concerns and I'm completely aware of those. But I guess my question about an elementary school, because I'm at the high school level, right now, what is the protocol at Whitman-Hanson? If a student in a first grade classroom tests positive, do all of the students in that class, in that cohort quarantine, or is it only kids around them? Or are we saying there are no close contacts because they're six feet apart?
So, so we would look to make sure everybody was six feet apart. We had an issue in a kindergarten class where the teacher and the parent ended up being in close contact of a student, but no other students because they were six feet. And because of the current busing situation, we checked, looked on the bus and nobody was quarantined. So right now it would be, you would look to see if that student was in contact with anyone in, in lunch or whatever, but because of six feet, we've had very minimal quarantining from school.
Okay. So I guess my follow-up to that is then, if you're looking at, right, because I, for me, you know, especially because of the remote at the high school and things that Chris was alluding to, starting sooner with the younger grades might be a better thing to do. But I guess one of the pieces of information we have to get out to families is if these kids are less than six feet, if they're four feet or five feet even, right, that changes the close contact rule. And as much as, you know, 80, almost 80% of the hybrid parents or caretakers want their children back in school, you know, and I just wonder if, so, so I have, I, my, my niece is in Connecticut and since she started, she's been quarantined for six weeks because of this, right? So I think that the more information, everything you're saying and everything you've said is wonderful and great and is information, but if there was, I don't know, like a, a more detailed survey that we could get out to families before, you know what I'm saying, to help like inform our decision-making? So this percentage of families want to go back, but if two weeks after they go back, their kid is quarantined for two weeks, they don't, you know, because how are you going to work if you now you have to take care of your kid at home who doesn't have, um, just some more detailed things like that? Because to me, that's the biggest piece. At the high school level, the middle school level, you're talking 56 kids, if there's a one, one positive case, right? And these things, as much as we say them, right, the, the, the reality of it actually happening, I think is important. But I just, I guess my concern right now is looking at the model that we have, our elementary students, right? So we have kids who left kindergarten last year in March and haven't been in school, and they're in first grade now. So the sooner that we can get to them, right, the better it's going to be.
So one of, one of the things, the priority is really the one to five, and I think most districts are looking one to five just because of that. And the secondary not necessarily as a priority, but we're really looking at the elementary piece, so that, that's the other piece of focus is even trying to get the first graders back. When I mentioned going to Conley and Duval to look at that, just to see if spacing was an issue. So yeah, we will, again, in the plan as we go, we can actually stagger that as well to see where we are. But the contact tracing piece will be, will be an issue if we're at under six feet.
Dawn?
A question around vaccinations. So how many staff would we be looking to vaccinate?
492, George?
492.
Okay. So when a combination of Hanson and Whitman Fire have 492 vaccines on hand, are they following the state phases on who gets a vaccine next?
Yes.
Right? So really the directive, we're waiting and our staff is waiting for a vaccine, is coming from the state?
Correct.
Okay.
So I did send a letter to, from the South Shore Superintendent's, Kevin signed it as well to try to prioritize teachers as, as unions and as superintendents. The, the chiefs were geared up, ready to go. They've been shut off, not necessarily just for, for, for structure, they can't access the vaccine now to do clinics for their 75-plus. The, one of the reasons I was watching the, the governor today was, I had heard that the governor was not going to allow locals to actually vaccinate anymore, it was going to be all mass sites. He did not say that today. He added today to, again, to get the public going, he added today that if you're a caretaker or, or a, knew somebody that was 75, you could take that person to a vaccination person. And I know I spoke to Ms. Niffen on the way, you know, my Pembroke connect in, in Pembroke blew up, hey, if teachers know somebody who's 75, take them for their shot. It hasn't been a great rollout, and I, I want to talk about the partnership with our chiefs. We had a good plan, we still have a plan. If they can access the vaccine, if people in, in our community want our kids back, and I think you raised a good point of bringing it home, not only for teachers to be vaccinated, but people who are 65-plus, people with comorbidities, two or more, should be on that next phase sooner than later, because Dan is right, students may not get it too bad, and we've had kids that have had it and have recovered, but they can spread it to their moms and dads. And I know I had a, a school committee member and I spoke at one point and said, well, great, teachers are vaccinated, but I'm not in any of those categories and, you know, my kids are going to be there. So it, it's, it's an issue that we have to digest and dialogue. And if parents want to call the governor's office or make complaints and, and put some pressure on, on, on Governor Baker.
I'm having trouble here.
Oh, there's Siri. You know, I, I would advise you to go. We've done quite a bit as a state organization of superintendents, but it may be time to hear from the public. I know the press conference today, if you follow along and you watch, people, people are upset. I, I, we had a plan, I felt really good about the plan, the plan blew up from the governor's office, nothing, nothing local, and I know both my chiefs are very frustrated that they can't access the vaccine, for their residents, for their, for their community, for our teachers, because it will all help in, in relieving some of the anxiety about getting kids back into school and getting some normalcy back in. So that's, that's the low and short. We have 492 staff that signed up for it and are willing to get the shot. The concern is timing, because the second vaccine in particular, people experience flu-like symptoms more often than not, not, not going to knock you out for a week, but you're not going to feel like you should be in front of 15 or 20 kids at your best. And my concern today, and I shared it with Kevin and Cindy, is that if it's these max vax, if we're going to Gillette and all the, all the, they're open to everybody and it's only, you know, Saturday and Sunday that my teachers can get it, they're going to take first available and that will be any day of the week for the second shot and the, and the first shot and the second shot. And that will mean somebody's out of class and you all know I don't have any subs anyway. So it's going to affect learning as we go if 495 folks have to get shots over the next month and a half. It's going to be during school. So if you can call the legislature and put some pressure on, on Governor Baker on this, that would be awesome.
Fred? Go ahead.
Sorry, one, one follow-up.
And there's nothing to recruit us individual, as individuals, for writing letters as well. I know I've already sent mine to the governor as, I did share some of the contacts with Jeff, so.
Yep.
He's, he's aware of that. Questions, comments that I had was number one, anything that we're doing, can we involve our fire chiefs and our border house to, you know, if we're going to talk about relaxing distancing, et cetera? I feel that anything, you know, they're the experts to give us, you know, advice. Number two, as far as our teachers, you know, I believe that they, that they deserve to be vaccinated before they're all back in full force. Yeah, I believe that the safety and well-being of our folks is paramount, anything, as well as our children, don't get me wrong. And then just as a crazy idea, could we have staggered type of classrooms? You know, maybe if there are children that have risk factors at home or at-risk students, that we have at-risk classrooms, you know, that would have an enhanced social distancing, et cetera? That, you know, perhaps that would solve a little bit of a problem as well. Those are my couple of bullet points I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Thanks. Dawn, did you have something?
Dawn?
Yeah. So a follow-up on vaccines with staff, has there been any talk about the teachers who work with high needs, so our OTPT who are really hands-on with those students, would they have fallen under the palliative care?
They're already under the first phase. OTPT are in.
They got vaccinated already.
They're, they're different, different folks, so not a special education teacher, but an OTPT, some therapists fell into phase one.
Right, working full-time with the high needs, right? Because I know group homes and the like fell under vaccines and qualified.
So, so those folks were in stage one or phase one?
So our staff, do you know?
So, we don't have a lot of OTPT, we contract out.
Okay.
So, but those folks did. Anybody that was available, like our school nurses have all been vaccinated once and are waiting the second shot.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Chris.
Now getting, I give the, the big high level now getting way into the weeds. So if we, if we had a classroom and the students were within that six foot, all right, so let's say we have 27 people at whatever school you want in a class, all right, 26 students, and they're less than six feet, and someone does test positive, and I know this is part of working in the plan, you have an initial thought, how would that work? So does that entire class now need to quarantine? Are they, if they're three feet apart, what?
Lisa would go to the three feet and, and look at that immediate, that six-foot range. So if you had 27, I'm probably guessing eight kids, nine kids out of that classroom will be quarantined.
And what would be the learning model for those kids?
It's a great question right now. That's something we have to figure out as well.
Because it's not going to be, I think that's the mindset, right? It's not going to be as simple as, oh, they can just be remote, well, the teacher that's supposed to be teaching on the remote is now in the classroom. So you may have literally, and I'm not saying this is the past, but you may have, the entire classroom is now going to be remote for two weeks.
Correct.
At a classroom level.
That's right.
And that's where, again, you've got to kind of get through some of this, otherwise you're going to have classroom after classroom after classroom that's potentially just remote.
And, and, and that's, that's the other layer of if we do quarantine, what are we, what are we giving you as, I'm just not going to give you, you know, check out your assignments? You know, first grader, whatever, second grade. So those are, those are the other pieces of this. And when I said trying to do it right, those are the things we're looking at. So if X happens, here's Y. If X and Y happen, here's Z. So we can present you this, and, and you know, both, I think we've presented over the last couple of years, George and I are pretty thorough, of trying to think out, outside the box of, of doing things. This is challenging because every time we come up with, okay, here's what we can do, there's another, there's another pathway. I will feel much more comfortable, and I believe the CDC came out with this today, don't quote me, but I heard, is that once you get the second shot, you don't have to quarantine, which is great for me. If it's a teacher who's got their second shot, that means even if members of the class go out, the teacher, even if they were a close contact, doesn't have to go out, that means I don't have to replace that teacher who's a close contact. That's the other piece, as this information goes out, that's the other, the other issues that we have. I did hear through the grapevine that there was already, you know, a, a school that has kids in and a classroom is already quarantining, you know, locally around here. So those are the things. I just want to make sure we have a plan that, the plan we put forward in, in August, we're pretty, pretty thoroughly vetted as we went. I feel like that's what we were working on, but it just escalated to the point of, I was the hamster on the wheel that just was spinning last week, and I felt we had a good conversation in January to get something out in March. I still feel that's the March date to start looking at that reentry, and maybe it's that April 1st or March 31st, or what did I write down? March 31st or April 5th? April 19th is, is April vacation. We will be breaking down and bringing things back into the classrooms next week. The fact that we don't have desks at Indian Head is a problem. The fact that we have trap tables at Hanson Middle is a problem. So those are the other problems that we have to solve. If we get back and the weather's nicer in March or April, I have no issues with teachers using the outside experience to get those kids outside. Maybe we're into getting tents like a lot of schools did in the fall, and now we're back inside. At the secondary level, maybe kids at the middle school and the high school are eating outside. Maybe at the elementary, the class goes outside for the, for, for the time that they get out, they go and, and have their, their mask breaks and their lunch breaks. Don't forget, we also have to have mask breaks during the course of the day, and if you have 20 kids in a classroom, you can't do that, so you're going somewhere else. So those are the other little, little tidbits that are out in the community, that I know people want kids back, I get it, I, I absolutely do, and I, and we will work hard to make sure that that happens when it's, when it's safe and appropriate for students to be in. So we will get some more information out to parents. I hope to have that information on, on the third as we go, and at least a, a, a demograph, or a, a, something for you to see what it will look like in a classroom. If we, if any of you over the next couple of weeks want to take a tour, and we walk through, you'll see what a classroom is, we'll walk in, into my small rooms, we'll walk into the big rooms, and you'll see the different dynamics. We can show you what it's like in, in the lunchroom and how that might be different. The lunch tables in their own, they're all round tables. Right now I have desks at Whitman Middle that are coming back to the high school, I have desks in the cafeteria that'll have to be going back to classrooms, they'll be at those wrong, round octagon tables, and there might be two kids at a pop, and they might be having to sit the same way with their masks off instead of together. So we'll look different, and I think that's the overarching piece to the community now is no matter what we bring back, however it is and whenever it is this year, it's going to look very different. And I don't know if that's going to change by September. I'm really hopeful that we're back into a real normalcy, but the change itself, coming back this year will look very different than when we left last year.
Hillary, and then we got to move on. Go ahead, Chris.
I'll be super quick, because I think if we're not going to meet again until March, one thing to just consider, I don't know how you do this, build it off of Hillary's point, I don't know if it's necessarily a survey or more of a survey slash commitment, right? So if you're going to go back to parents, I know in the past, we said you might be able to change from some, so semester to semester or over periods of time, this might be a, you've got to kind of lock it in.
You've got to commit.
At this point, so you're going to be remote, you're going to be in person, which means you may have to flip back and forth and buss it, right? So I think you're going to need, I don't know how you're going to build a plan without some finite data. So there might be, I don't know if it's a survey or more of, you've got to make your selections here kind of for the rest of the year, because otherwise I don't know how you're going to build a plan. Right, you can survey me all along, but if I, today I feel like I'm comfortable sending my kids in person and then tomorrow I want them remote. You've got to build a plan that's going to probably get us to the end of the year, so I don't know if that's a survey or what that is, but.
It's a commitment piece, and, and I will tell you, we did that in, in, in September and that went by the wayside. It depends, again, what the commissioner tells me I got to do, because he also said you have to offer a remote program for, for parents, and we did. And I don't know, and he said there was flexibility there. So again, tomorrow's conference call might give some more, because there's pressure across the, the state. I will say, we are in hybrid, we have been, there are schools that are still in full remote right now. And I have a colleague that said, hey, we just got back in for hybrid, we're very excited for the first time. So we're, we're, we're doing okay, and we're going to try to strive to do better as, as we go along. And I don't know if anybody.
Hillary?
I just wanted to add to Chris's point earlier about if kids have to quarantine, that's why I was asking the question. If you look at the blueprints that other districts have, there is no plan for synchronous instruction when students are out quarantining. And that's incredibly problematic. And I think that that is something that we have to consider. As a teacher and a parent, as a parent, that's problematic, but as a teacher, now I've got to come up with all this work that I've got to give a kid, right? Because who's going to give them the asynchronous work? Those are all things to consider, so I just wanted to add to that point. If you look at other districts that have plans, they have no plan, so.
Heard. And that's, I, I've seen theirs, their thoughts, I call them thoughts, their wishful thinking. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I keep, you know, beating that horse, it was, but.
I just think also too, I think if we're going to build a plan that talks about what, what you just alluded to, I think then it would be helpful is, are we building that plan with a restriction of six feet to three? And are we building that plan only when teachers have their second vaccination? Because I think those things would also be helpful into building a plan that might be able to be completely fleshed out. So I think if we can clear up some of those finite data points that you just mentioned, then those would be two of them that I think would be helpful also. So I don't know what that, I don't know if that's an ask, I don't know if that's just a something that we have to think about, but I think at some point, we need to be able to answer that question. Is six to three and under okay? And are we going to, are we doing this when they're vaccinated, after they're vaccinated? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, we, we spoke about that, those are the details I need from you folks, and, and we can, we'll, we'll do the budget. I mean, we'll be formulating our, our thoughts as we go, but at our budget meeting in, in two weeks, if, if you want to take a, I want to say a vote of a, of where you want us to go. I assume right now I'm building a plan under three feet, or under six feet, because that's the only way. And I'm, I'm going to look at both, and you, I'll present to you, you know, the, the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated, when you want to start. So I, I assume I'm going to be looking at something under six feet.
Don't you think one is contingent on the other?
That's going to be a, you know, if, I will have.
If you're vaccinated, then you can go less than six feet.
From a teacher's desk.
You know what I'm saying?
We can, we can share that to you, to, I mean, but the, the six, we would add a couple more desks into that classroom, that's all. Okay?
Dan?
This will all be discussed on March 3rd?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Continue on, Jeff.
John, you want to come up and talk a little bit about the SJ and the first student, where we are? Please.
Yeah, this is more a, an opportunity to communicate with the committee as to what's going on. I don't need you to vote on anything at this point. Just want to make you aware that, that we are in the process of sending out two 30B procurement projects. 30B being the, the state law that deals with procurement, purchasing items. The first is going to be a request for proposals for custodial services, the so-called SJ contract, because they happen to be the current contractor. It will go out as a, as a request for proposal, which means that there'll be a series of qualifications that they have to meet, and we'll look at those first, and then deal with the, deal with the, with the cost, and that becomes a second item. And the other is a request for bid, which becomes sometimes called a request for quotation, where we send out very strict qualifications for people to meet. In this case, it will be bus companies, because it's a request for student transportation. And then based upon the price, we make an award. In both cases, we have documents we have used before that we've been successful with and, and have had some bid protests, as a matter of fact, and, and they've been upheld. So we're comfortable with the documents, and we'll be moving forward with that. And those are two important contracts for us to get out of the way, because they are significant dollar amounts and affect the budget that we will have going into next year.
Questions, anyone?
John, what would be the time length on those? Not, not so much getting to the period, but how much would each be? Every, every three years?
Probably a three, three-year contract.
Well, with, with this, with this, with the custodial contract, it'll be, I suspect what we'd done before, which is three years with a two-year extension. With the bus contract, we're actually, it has traditionally been three years with a two-year extension, and both extensions are at, are at the customer's choice, not at the, at the contractor's choice. And we're giving thought to making that a five-year procurement, which is now allowed. The reason for that is, one of the big costs of, of, of a transportation contract is the buses. Buses cost about $85,000 more or less per copy. The risk to a, to a bidder that after three years, they may lose that contract affects the price. So that and the fact that I think in recorded history, nobody's ever not extended the contract. I mean, I can't think anybody who's ever done that usually find out that, that prices go up over time, not go down over time. One of the big expenses, of course, has to do with fuel, and it has been a very, very, very long time since a, since a transportation contract hasn't had a fuel clause that really says, as the price of fuel goes up, we will pay that as the price of fuel goes down, we as a customer will get a benefit from it. So we're, we're sort of thinking about that. And I say, we are thinking about that. It's a collaborative bid with, with Abington, we've done that for a number of years. And I say collaborative bid, because it's not a joint purchase agreement. Each, each of the two entities, Abington and Whitman Hansen, has the opportunity to accept or reject a bid. So we are not dependent on each other.
Anyone else?
Want to keep going with 21 budget, please?
So actually, excuse me. In terms of the budget, I'm, I'm thrilled to say that, that there's nothing really exciting to talk about. As I look at the spend rate between 20 and 21, we're actually slightly below the spend rate from, from last year. This time last year, we're at 65.8% of our appropriated budget. This year, we're at 61.1%. That's as of the, the end of, the end of January. And in terms of revenues, it's pretty much on, on par. Last year, we were at 53%, this year, we're at 52.5%. What's making this work in this COVID year has been the grants. And we talked about that last time, we have some significant expenses paying for, being paid for through a grant or grants. And I'm actually happy to say that since our last meeting, we have been informed that our very first Plymouth County reimbursement that we submitted back on September 29th has been approved. It was $431,500. So we will shortly be receiving a check that will come, two checks, one will come from Whitman, one will come from Hanson. We don't get to submit ourselves, but those have been approved. We have two other, two other requests that are in the queue, they total $433,000. So we're anxious to get those approved and on, and deposited. And then finally, we have some additional expenses that we will be, be submitting as well. One of them actually has to do with Chromebooks, and we have just received those Chromebooks within the last week. So we finally can put in our, put in our request for that money, and that money will come as a result of the work of Representative Cutler.
Questions, anyone? John?
In regards to the CARES Act fund, it feels like forever ago, but we had the presentation on the technology assessment. So do we know what our share, the district's share of available CARES Act funds are with both towns that we may have available to us when we look at the cost of these technology needs assessments? Because that was not a previous budget item, and, you know.
I, you can answer.
No, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think we're going to be hard pressed to replace anything that we heard tonight. Is that what you're asking through the CARES Act?
More or less, what funds the towns have available for the district.
But I'm not sure if that's a COVID-related.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have two problems. One is, I don't really think that there's going to be that capacity.
Not for all of it, of course.
Between us, and I think most of that money is really going to be, when we get to the very end, I think we're going to be in competition, if you will, with our hosts about who has the, who has the greatest need for those funds.
Okay.
The second is, what Jeff was talking about, is in the end, these, these grants are built around, built around, at least the ones we're talking about now, were built around the, the emergency related to, to COVID. And so we're talking about future expenditures that go into, into future years, not being, and this is replacing equipment, it's not being responsive to a need that developed because of COVID.
Okay.
When we, when we bought the computers to support remote learning, that was certainly responsive. Replacing course switches in the building, I, we'd have a hard time getting that through.
So what we, what we looked through really specifically through CARES are the laptops we purchased for live streaming, the Chromebooks we purchased for students, the PPE, the sanitization, excuse me, the cleaning, and then the staffing. Because we didn't, we didn't have in our budget enough money to staff what we're staffing for those remote programs. That's what's going in the CARES Act. That's why the extension of December 30th was extreme, extremely important for us, because we have staff that are going to be paid through June, through, through those pieces. And we just, I want to caution the committee, we have to be very careful with spending CARES money, because it comes through both towns, but not you trying to get something that isn't COVID-related. And John and I have talked about that specifically, and we're, I don't want to be audited in three years for misappropriating funds. So I think today's presentation, although thorough and expensive, is, is not a, a COVID-related issue, through CARES at least. That doesn't mean in the future, if there's some more money coming from the Fed, as far as a stimulus around remote and supporting remote, I think that would be a, a piece to say, if we're looking into FY '22 or '23, and there's money coming from Washington this spring or the summer, to say, you need to be able to support something in a remote platform ongoing, I can absolutely say, hey, look, this is what we're going to need to support wireless moving forward. And that might be something. But the way it's written now, I'd be very concerned about, about doing that at this point.
And one follow-up, this might be for budget, but do you have an inventory count of how many Chromebooks we have? We have about 3,500 students, so how close are we to actual one-to-one, based on?
Georgia, come up, because with good news comes bad news.
Come on down.
Just the number.
Yeah, well, you got to hear, I mean.
1,078 Chromebooks, 1,078 Chromebooks would have been purchased when they finally come in. So 700, I believe, and 80 of them have come in, and we have one shipment left. When you add that to the existing Chromebooks we have, it's a double-edged sword. You have, we would be at capacity to have one-to-one. However, what happens is, is that the end-of-life, so right now, at this time next year, you'll have 2,400 of those that end of life. All of our Toshiba's, all of our ACers no longer support automatic updates, and, but the biggest problem is, they no longer support TestNav. So TestNav would be what we use for our MCAS testing. So we cannot use those. So they're, they're, they're okay, as long as they don't break down, but we don't have a way to do that. So one of the things we'll be talking about a little bit in the budget is a refresh cycle, so that we can start to make sure that as they age out, we can replace them, so we can continue and hopefully get to the one-to-one. If I quickly had to say, if everybody were to come back, boom, the last hour didn't matter, everybody's coming back to school as we did a year ago, we would be looking at taking all of our Chromebooks, replacing them for, back in the classroom, so that everyone has one as a class set, and then moving on from there. However, as soon as we do that, we're going to lose end-of-life with a, with a lot of them. So the goal is still to be one-on-one. We will not get to that point, or we will not be able to sustain that when the testing season comes in. And that presents another problem. On top of everything we've talked about, we still have MCAS to give for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors that are graduation requirements and grades three to eight. Although not the length or the breadth that we've had in the past, we still have to do that. So the thing we're trying to do now, over vacation, is take those Chromebooks, get them ready from a TestNav testing standpoint, so that the Chromebooks that are still out there in the hands of students and teachers and families can remain during this time of COVID, and that we can still take our state-mandated tests. So we're at it, we have to duplicate our efforts a little bit.
So that technology need with Chromebooks would qualify under the CARES Act spending if we worked with the towns to see what funds?
Yeah.
Are available?
And I think that's what we're doing.
Okay, yeah, right, right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So a little briefly, a little bit about, and John is going to hang here for just a minute, preliminary projections for FY '22. We have our full presentation on February 24th. It will be a remote meeting. We're going to use the same web, web, Zoom webinar, so people can comment, but we will all be remotely. When we worked with WA, the, the cable company, they said that it would be too difficult to have an in-person slash full public hearing, the way they scheduled it this, this way. So it, it will be remote for us. I mean, you folks can have a, you know, somebody can be in that corner or whatever, you can be home, but it'll be a remote presentation. Just to give you a little bit of an idea where we're at, our costs are going up in insurance, everything that you, you folks know every year, utility costs going up, insurance costs go up, pension costs for PCA go up. What we don't have right now is a definitive on unit A, B, C, or D for our teachers, our pairs, our, our administrators, and our paraprofessionals. So that's going to be a little bit of a wild card, as far as we put that in. What we've talked about, looking at increasing in the budget is interventionists, looking for regression, we're going to be looking for staff members to do that, we're going to be looking at adding to the budget for that. And also social, social, emotional slash special education programs to work with kids that are going to have trouble transitioning back to school in September, and also making sure all our special education programs in district are, are relatively equitable, and we have spots for all of our kids, and the opportunity to start bringing kids back. I think Lauren has done a phenomenal job of bringing kids back from out-of-district placements into our programs. And we have a need for, for enhancing some of ours, so we can start bringing some kids back, and we're not paying the cost. I have John standing up there, because there is something called SRR2 that's out and about. And some folks in, in the committee already know about SRR2, and it was great, I heard we were getting SRR2 money to the tune of $1,100, or $1,1,000. But there's a catch to SRR2, and I'm going to let John explain a little bit about the catch of SRR2.
So, and actually, this sort of deals with, with Mrs. Byers talking about, what can we use this money for? And when we talk about grant money. So to begin with, $10,000 of that million dollars that you're talking about is, has to be used for mental health. So we're at $991,704, and we said, yippee, that, that will pay for a lot of things, dealing with regression and other issues that have come about from COVID. But with some language that is especially confusing, and I spent a lot of years reading the language from this, from the Department of, of Education. It talks about 75% of that money to be reserved for and used by communities to offset the increase in minimum contribution. Now, it's, it's a little fuzzy as to exactly what that means. I think I know what the intent is. I've actually sat through two webinars, and I'm still confused, but so is the state. And they are coming out with some new directions, they say, and I'm sure they will, and as well as a webinar for business managers to get a better sense of what we can do with it. In the end, it's, it, we are talking about additional funding for schools. Now, the question really is, is this going to be treated as Chapter 70 money? Or is it going to be treated as grant money off to the side? The big difference is, when it is grant money, it can't, in the past, it's never been able to be used to, to offset a required spending. And it, and grant money is used to supplement, not supplant, local spending. So on the face of it, it appears as if there's a conflict. Not sure how this is all going to work out, or what it's going to mean. At worst, we get $200,000 in round numbers that we will be able to use for some of these other, other programs that are necessary and often paid for through grants. And if it is treated as additional funding under chap, sort of a faux Chapter 70, well, that is going to go to help offset assessments. So how this turns out, gosh, I don't know. We're probably going to know by the time we get back here in two weeks. And, and it will affect, really, the assessment part of our budget, I suspect, not so much the program part of our budget.
I just wanted John to talk about that, because I, if it hits the public, and it has in certain areas, the school's got $1 million, and that, that's going to take care of their budget for next year. Not necessarily the case. It has to be worked out, and John read the language one way, I read the language a different way. He went to a webinar, they explained it kind of in the middle of that. So, so it's subject to inter, there's money out there, that's the good thing. Our communities, our schools, will get some money. It's like $1 million. How it's going to be used to either offset the assessments or offset, you know, I look at it very simple. If it's to us, I'm going to be able to pay for these regression pieces and these programs through that money, and I'm not going to be looking for it in the budget. If it's not to us, and if it's to the two towns, this is what I'm going to be submitting in the budget to see what we can get. So I'm in that flux about how we present that. And again, John's been around for a while, has read a lot of confusing documentation. This has been a, a real difficult piece. The, the state has come out and said they're going to give us more information, this was two weeks ago, the information hasn't been, been better as we, as we move forward. So that's the part of the, the budget that we're presenting, or, or the, the piece out there. So just know, as we go into, I'm not giving any percentages today, I'm not giving any numbers, we're going to be looking at cost increases in, in the usual areas, we're going to be looking at increases in program for regression and intervention, and we're going to be looking for increases in special education. Where we end up, and, and that's going to be, the first conversation is on the 24th, more of a, this is what we have, and I figured we'll start meeting almost every other week or weekly. The 3rd is going to be a meeting, the 10th is probably going to be a meeting, and we'll have to structure, this can be a budget meeting or a school committee meeting. Because I want to be able to dig down and, and get people into the conversations of the budget.
Just a Band-Aid.
Questions, anyone?
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Just, just one last thing, and I shared with the committee today, I did get an email from, from Mrs. O'Tina, from Whitman FinCom about non-mandated busing. I'm going to ask members from the school committee, from Selectmen, from, from the FinComs, to a meeting next week, it's going to be a meeting, an informational meeting, it's not going to be, if all of us come, we're not deliberating, but I want to hash out how we get to our transportation numbers, what that looks like. If there is a savings, if, if both towns eliminated non-mandated busing, I, I will tell this committee upfront, I did have a pretty lengthy conversation with Mr. Lyneham a couple of weeks ago, when he was substitute, substituting in as the town administrator, and about non-mandated busing, and he just refreshed my memory. Whitman put in non-mandated busing in the past for safety reasons for kids. They didn't want kids walking across 27, they didn't want kids walking across 18, they didn't want kids to not have a bus. So he just reminded me of that. It went in way before I got here, as a principal, as a superintendent. He said, don't get lost, it's a dollar amount, but that was the, the goal upfront, was to make sure kids had a ride to school and didn't have to cross where crossing guards weren't. Kids coming from Conley, from that side of the street to Whitman Middle, or vice versa. So that's the piece, as we discuss this going forward, the safety piece has to come into, into play. And I was reminded by, by the Selectmen and Whitman too, the Selectmen have, you know, are going to be voting on this as well and have some input, so we'll, we'll be inviting those members there. I will send something out to you guys when we set up a firm date, if you're available next week, it's school vacation week. I know some of the folks out there are teachers and have kids home, and they might be taking vacation, so we're going to try to do it that week, but I just wanted to share that[1738.73] But I just wanted to share that with you.
True.
In person?
Yes. Yeah, I, I don't expect more than 25 people at that meeting.
Don?
Can I ask that that be scheduled during a time that participants can attend, not during the day? Is it towards the end of the day, or the evening?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the calendar to see what we can do.
Okay.
Is that, you said that's gonna be a posted meeting, or you're not looking?
I, it, the way we can do it, it's gonna be a, a, a business-type informational meeting, so we won't have to post it, and it won't be deliberated upon. So it won't be a conflict for the selectmen, or for, for, for school committee to be there.
If there's any way to record it, I don't know if there is, but for informational purposes, so, like, I'd love to, but I don't know if I'll be able to go, I just, so.
We'll record it.
If you can record it and hear it, then you might get less folks.
Sure. I just think people, we, we wanna get it out there, John and I spoke today about what it is. What's the cost of a bus? What's the cost of a run? What's the tiers? Because it's, it's very difficult for me to just articulate that at, at a, at a meeting like this. So getting it as an informational only, again, we're not making any decisions about the buses, we're, it, that's not our call to make anyway. That's not even our recommendation to make to both communities to, to get rid of it. But as far as what, what this really means, to us, that's what we'll, we'll do.
Okay.
I'm all set. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. 2021-22 school academic calendar.
So here it is, kinda like a first read to get a look at. We're looking at, right now, a September 1st start date for kids, August 30th start date for teachers, that would put us out. Michelle, I'm looking at that highlight, where are we at? June 13th was 180?
Yep.
With five snow days, we, we tack onto that. I don't think the commissioner's gonna allow remote days next year, anyway, so it'll be off the table, so we'll have to include snow days. But just as an idea for folks, we're looking at a September 1st start date, Labor Day's the 6th this year, and bringing teachers back on the 30th. We don't need a vote today, it's just for your eyes only. We'll try to set it at, at maybe the March 3 meeting, as we go.
Okay. Superintendent's contract. As you all know, we've been meeting with the superintendent regarding his contract that runs out on the 30th of 2021. After hours of negotiation and a few meetings, we have come to an agreement, and the committee will be voting it tonight in open session, as is required. We have to enter into the agreement with the superintendent. I'm gonna highlight some of the considerations and changes from the existing contract. The new contract is for six years. Based on language in Section 4, which spells out the requirements for the superintendent to perform, the committee agreed upon this longer term. The next agreement is, the committee and Jeff agreed to modify Section 5 to elongate the notice he must provide if he wishes to terminate his contract. In the original contract, it was 90 days, and we modified it to 120 days. Section K, which would have provided a one-time separation benefit of $10,000, has been removed. The $10,000 has been spread out over the last three years of the contract, at $3,333.33 to come up with it. Section 6, which details the section of the superintendent's compensation, it's been updated to approve an increase of 2.5% each year for the remaining six years of his contract. We reviewed other salaries from other area superintendents, and we didn't identify that many that presently have a higher annual salary. In reviewing all the factors and benefits, the, in the total, the committee felt this was a fair contract for the district and the superintendent. There are not any other changes compared to Jeff's existing contract. The committee also discussed the cost relating to leadership, stability, and financial costs, and we did not review the contract if we were looking for a new superintendent at this time. Which means, if we didn't renew it, and we had to start looking for a contract, a new superintendent, the cost would be probably much greater. So we kind of all agreed to it. You have a copy of it in your packet? Is there any questions?
Motion to accept the.
Mr. Boyce made a motion to accept.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. Discussions? Don?
I have comment. I'd like to read, annually, there are two crucial opportunities for a superintendent to publicly advocate for an appropriate education for all students, and to historically document the state of education in the district. These opportunities are town meeting and the town report. Since July 2018, I have not seen any evidence of verbal communication from.
I have to stop you for a second, Don.
I'm.
This, we're, we're, we're voting on a negotiated contract, we're not renegotiating the contract, or talking about what anyone's opinion of the superintendent is. We're negotiating a contract, we're, we're talking about renewing the contract. All of that.
Okay, if, if this is discussion, can I add comment?
I don't believe we, you, you tried to renegotiate a contract, I think, from what I'm hearing.
No.
Or is this your own personal opinion that we, we had an executive session of, and the committee voted, and now you're, you're iterating it?
We didn't vote and.
No, we're voting the contract.
Executive discuss.
I'm sorry?
We didn't vote in executive session.
No, we're voting that, we're voting this in open session.
Right. So I.
Go ahead, continue.
Since July 2018, I have not seen any evidence of verbal communication from district leadership at town meetings, or written communication in the annual reports. If you read the 2019 Whitman or Hanson annual town report, and wanted to see a historical snapshot of our, the state of our schools pre-pandemic, you would not see any written account of the dire circumstances we faced when more than $1 million was cut from the operating budget, and 19 staff members were laid off.
It's a point of water, point of water, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm reading the contract, what are you reading?
Should make it a public comment. Did I just move the vote?
No, but I, I think the motion was to vote the contract.
Contract.
There's discussion, I thought I could make a comment during discussion regarding.
As long as it stays discussing the contract.
Okay.
Where is that in the contract?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to follow along, what, where, what are you reading?
I'm reading something that I wrote.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the contract?
Personal.
It's in regards to the vote for the contract.
Okay.
I think, can I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair Hayes. So I guess, the question I would have is, what part of the contract does your, does, does Ms. Byers's comment refer to? I think, is what?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to follow along.
Okay.
It, it, it sounds more like an evaluation point that you're making, Don.
Okay.
Just move to vote.
Okay.
This is the comment, I say move to vote.
Okay, I have to take the vote. I, I had a, a motion, I didn't hear a second.
There were two seconds.
Second one, Mr. Howard.
I'm sorry, Chris, you're correct, you're correct. Is there any further discussion directly related to the contract? Hearing done, we're gonna move to the vote. Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
No.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Uh, Michelle, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, subcommittee reports. Whitman Middle Building School, Building Committee, School Building Committee. Mr. Small?
Jeff, did you want, perhaps for clarity, it'd be easier for you to touch base on the enrollment projections?
Sure, so, so we submitted our, our, our enrollment projections to the state. I think we discussed that at one of our school committee meetings, and at our building committee. The state came across from MSBA with a, an appropriation or an enrollment projection of 586 students for a 5 through 8 building in Whitman. They looked at, by 2030, the average class size in, in Whitman, at each grade level will be about 150 students. We actually contracted with Nezdek to do an enrollment study, which they came across, and their enrollment projections were pretty spot-on with MSBA. And after having a conversation myself with Diane Sullivan from MSBA, and our liaison, they also agreed to move our enrollment projection up to about 675. So that's what the new Whitman Middle School will look like, 675, if the towns move forward. I will showcase in building committee meetings what the enrollment projections will look like, and they're pretty staggering for our district, if we wanna start looking by 2030, that our enrollment at this high school might be a little, about, about 850, if Hanson's enrollment follows projections of Whitman. So I signed off, Mr. Hayes signed off on a letter to MSBA to move us forward, to make sure all our documents were in line, and the next thing, we're, we're looking forward to hearing from them around feasibility. I know the town of Whitman appropriated feasibility money already to do that study, which is great. And then hopefully, we'll have a feasibility plan for the, the folks in the town of Whitman at this time next year, or a little bit later, that they can look at, moving forward on a building project, whether it be renovation, or, or a new building.
Thank you, Jeff. Pilgrimage collaborative, Mr. Boyce?
Yep, we met by Zoom on Thursday, February 4th. We covered a lot of regular business, because we didn't have a January meeting. We're doing the treasurer's evaluation, also doing the evaluation for the executive director, and we'll start our subcommittee for the budget very shortly, and I have been on that committee for a number of years, and can de, continue to do so, the, uh, subcommittee for the budget. If there's any question.
Question from Mr. Boyce? Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
You're welcome, you can ask me anytime, too.
Facilities. Fred?
We haven't met since our last meeting, we will be putting forth a meeting together very shortly, so that we can digest the information we received earlier, and also get warrants for the committee's approval for the annual meetings in May.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Policy, Don?
We met on January 25th. We had Jim Hardy from MASC in attendance, talked about the what and why of policy, and the superintendent's role is to implement the how, and who, who does things regarding, regarding policy. We discussed specifically policy JIB around student involvement and decision-making, and student advisory councils. We talked about policy IMG, which is animals in school. It was a good discussion around the distinguishing, or distinguishing between a service animal, an emotional support animal, or a therapy animal. And looking ahead to how, you know, that policy may be adjusted if we're able to allow a therapy animal into schools on a regular basis and so forth, for student support, and even staff. So we, that's pretty much summarizes that. We don't have another meeting scheduled, but I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Insurance committee?
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Okay. Negotiation subcommittee. Mr. Jones?
I believe we are meeting together on March 2nd.
Okay. Regional agreement subcommittee?
We have not met.
Okay. An entertaining motion to adjourn?
So move by Dan?
Seconded by Mr. Boyce.
Was it Mr. Colady? And seconded by Mr. Boyce? I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Have we heard from David Forth? Is he, everything okay? He hasn't been here the last couple of weeks.
I haven't, I didn't hear, I heard from him at the last meeting, at about 5 minutes of 6, somewhere in that vicinity, and he said he couldn't attend. I haven't heard tonight, but, I don't have my iPad with me, in the last, usually I get a message from email, I'll check it right now.
I think Mr. Small had a question, too.
Bob, I think Fred had a question.
I'm sorry?
If we haven't entered into adjournment, legislative update?